Okay. He's looking at that clock, too. Yeah, it's not right. Yeah, I was looking at mine. I'm looking at that. Usually they match, but they do not tonight. Yes, there you go. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Tuesday, November 12, 2024, at 7:02 in the evening. There's no closed session tonight, so I have nothing to report. Let's have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Santanes.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Coops.
Here. Tonight, we'll have the invocation provided by Councilmember Sonia Sanzines, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Brian McNerney, interim director of public safety. So please stand with me.
Let's borrow a head in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life, the gift of family, the gift of this wonderful community called City of Bellflower. We thank you for all the blessings you bestowed upon us. We thank you for giving us a dedicated staff. We thank our first responders for keeping us safe. As we complete the last election, we thank you for giving us a peaceful election. Please guide those who were elected and re-elected as they work towards improvement in their respective communities. As we celebrate Veterans Day yesterday, we thank the members of military and those who are currently serving. Please guide them and their families. As we gather tonight to discuss the various issues before us, please guide us, enlighten us, and give us the wisdom to decide what's best for our community. We ask all this in your mighty name. Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Have you seated? Mark your calendars. The annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony is scheduled to take place Friday, December 6, at 6:30 p.m. downtown Bellflower, near Friendship Square. Local residents and neighboring communities are invited to this free event. It's filled with carolers, crafts, real snow sledding. Santa Claus will make a special appearance to meet with the children, take a photo, and listen to their holiday wishes. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2261. Mayor Protem Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. The Bellflower Volunteer Center is working closely with residents, community groups, schools, service clubs, and organizations to provide Christmas food boxes, gift cards to families in need. Gift cards, monetary donations, canned goods, and gifts for children can be donated and will be received by Monday, December 2. For more details, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2331, or you can email at msandmaryhardy@bellflower.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. Congratulations to the 30 recent graduates of the Emprendedoras Small Business Program. Over the past three years, this program has been open to our Spanish-speaking entrepreneurs and business owners. However, this coming spring, the city will offer the English version of the same program led by the instructor, Monica Robles. The Bellflower Entrepreneur Academy is an eight-week program focused on empowering individuals to develop their leadership skills and business resilience. The program is set to begin Thursday, February 13, 2025. Registration is not yet open, but when it does, the announcement will be posted on the city's website at www.bellflower.org. I can't believe I just said February 13, 2025.
That's what you're gonna have to say.
This whole year just went by real quick. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Senate Councilmember Sonia Sanzines.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The City of Bellflower is considering establishing an arts district along Clark Avenue and wants to hear from our residents and business owners. An art district is a designated area intended to foster and support the arts culture within our community. To provide your input, please complete a survey on the city's website, which can be found at www.bellflower.org artsurvey. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanzines. Councilmember Wendy Morse.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites the business community to its Business-to-Business Casual Connections event on Thursday, November 21, from 11:30 to 12:30 p.m. The Chamber will also be hosting its monthly morning mingle on Tuesday, November 26, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at 562-867-1744. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. United States Postal Service presentation. Next, we're gonna have Marjon Barrigan from the United States Postal Inspectors, L.A. Division, will be providing a presentation about the United States Postal Service. Welcome.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Postal Inspector Lucas Watanabe. Joining me is Postal Inspector Marjon Barrigan Huestead. And we are here just to give you a brief overview of what, who we are, and what we do. So we are postal inspectors. We are the oldest federal law enforcement agency in the country. We were created at the behest of George Washington to Benjamin Franklin, the first postmaster general. And so since the birth of our nation, our agency has been defending the postal service, the mail, and its employees, evolving and adapting to meet the needs of the time. Fast forward to today, where we now enforce over 200 federal statutes to protect the mail. And so with our latest postmaster general, Louis DeJoy, he, with our chief postal inspector, has launched Project Safe Delivery, which sought to unify our approach to federal law enforcement to protect the mails. And it's a more holistic approach to all of it. And it was launched in May of 2023, as you can see there. So a few key stats from that initiative is we have over 12,000 high-security blue collection boxes, 49,000 electronic locking mechanisms are to be installed on those locks. And that's, again, part of us evolving and adapting to meet the needs of the current time. And we are putting a higher emphasis on training our employees to know how to respond and mitigate the effects of any violent crimes that may happen. Perfect. The three main pillars of Project Safe Delivery are protect, prevent, and enforce. For the protect aspect, it's really looking at reinforcing those mail receptacles to harden the target and make them more difficult to attack. So that is, again, is those high-security collection boxes. Pretty much the goal is to get all collection boxes to be high-security so that we don't have any of the old, very easy-to-defeat collection boxes. And then we've currently installed over 30,000 of the electronic locking mechanisms, and we are working on expanding that. And those are really cool. They pair up with Bluetooth through, like, the carrier scanners. It's pretty high-tech. The prevention pillar, so that's gonna be raising employee and public awareness of crimes committed against the postal service. This outreach is part of that as well. But we also go and we talk to our carriers. A big portion of our job is speaking to our employees so that they understand best practices in the event of a robbery, how to prevent it, or not prevent it, but things to mitigate vehicle break-ins so that their personal belongings don't get stolen, those sorts of measures. And then the enforcement pillar, so that is the more sort of flashy aspect that you would see, the traditional law enforcement aspect. So that's when we go and effect the arrests and search warrants related to the crimes committed against the postal service. And then, we, L.A., twice in this past year, we've actually had surges, which is our term for, we bring in personnel and resources from across the country to focus on specific areas in Los Angeles that are experiencing greater crimes. And so we just had one, we had one in May, and then we just finished one in October as well. So we are very proactive about our approach to this. Yeah. Are there any questions?
So when you mentioned that you've been focusing on certain areas, is Bellflower included in that?
Yes.
So, you know, the date you put up there, May of '23, most of our problems developed after that date, here in Bellflower.
They started in May.
Yeah.
They started in May.
Right. But have you had any success? You know, the severity of Bellflower is appalling. We have been subjected to all kinds of inquiries from our citizens, who have always trusted the mail service. It gets to the point now, when I go to the different banks, they even suggest not to use the mail to make a payment, because they're having to sort out all these checks that have been adjusted to a higher amount. Thousands and thousands of dollars have been stolen from these accounts, many times with no consideration on how to get the money back. And I'm glad you're here to explain how it is that you're taking care of business, but we have actually had people in our back parking lot with mailbags that we watched jump over the fence with mailbags stolen out of vehicles that are delivering the mail. That's how direct we know the problem is. And I'm sure the city manager and the city assistants have brought you forward, but I just wanted to impose on you how it is that we are really been affected by this. The whole community, every one of us council members have lost mail, and we have never had that problem. I've lived in town, and we all have for our whole lives. We trusted the mail service to be able to drop something off and know that it got to the destination. We've had, I had a situation here with the city where we, PJ, Director of Public Recreation, he sent something in January, he got it in June, the recipient. And things like that, what can you do to let us know that the old confident way of dealing with the postal service is gonna be restored? Because at this point, it's a low ebb. Any answers to any of those questions?
Okay, there we go. Marjon, postal inspector here as well.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for expressing your concerns. We have visited many communities around Los Angeles, and now we get to come and speak with you all and hear your concerns here in Bellflower. Project Safe Delivery is a response to the rise in mail theft that we've seen across the nation and here in Los Angeles. We believe that during the COVID months, when several of us were home and not out and about, that the rise in crime occurred during that time, and we are seeing the results of that after the COVID months. A lot of the shutdown, folks were able to go out, and it was a free-for-all. As if you speak to other law enforcement agencies, us included, we saw, we saw the methods of operation change. And as a result, we did see some of the methods of operation change, and there was a focus on the mail. And we are combating that through Project Safe Delivery. We are able to add more resources. However, we do need more resources as well. We encourage anyone who is a victim to please contact us. Please contact the Postal Inspection Service. We have a hotline. You can contact us online, USPIS.gov. There is a way to file a complaint. We actually haven't seen that, as many complaints as I believe you are expressing there are currently victims.
Could you please, is it a 1-800 number? I'd like to announce.
Yes, sir. I will mention it. It's 1-877-876-2455. There are options. Options one, customer service. Options two is to file a complaint. And that's where you speak, will speak with somebody in the inspection service who will take your complaint. Now, the inspection service does read and review every single complaint that we get. If it reaches the level that we can't, it has enough information for us to respond, we will always respond. Now, there are how many inspectors in this area?
Four, as of today.
So how long does it take to respond?
There are four inspectors to cover this area.
And the area includes not only Bellflower, but probably Lakewood and Downey and other surrounding cities?
That is right.
All of Orange County.
And
All of L.A. County?
Orange.
Orange County.
All of Orange County.
Well, we're in L.A. County. So it's Orange and L.A. County?
Yeah, this team is all Orange County and then southeastern L.A. County.
Well, that doesn't give me a lot of confidence that only four individuals do in that large an area.
We would love to hire more postal inspectors. We would love to hire more postal inspectors to be able to cover the increase in demand. And so as you can imagine, we review every single complaint that comes to us. Now, the way the process works is after we review our complaints that come directly from customers, we then present the case to an AUSA, to a United States Attorney, Assistant United States Attorney. From there, they will either accept or the case to prosecute, or they will not. So we are doing our part the best we can. Whether the United States Attorney's Office accepts the case or not, it's nothing, is completely out of our control. They sometimes have thresholds. They sometimes have monetary thresholds. They sometimes ask us how many victims were affected by this particular crime. We don't always know, depending on their caseload, if there's a violent crime that has been called in before us, if there's a drug-related crime that has been called in before us. It depends on the day. But we do review every single complaint that does come in.
Can you share with us whether or not you've had any success in our community as to apprehending anybody?
The surge that my partner here, Lucas, was just talking about, I'll let him describe it, because I wasn't actually at the last one. You were.
So it was around the last surge when we were made aware of the problems in Bellflower. During the surge, we did send a pair of inspectors out to make inquiries and interviews to further the investigation. But to bluntly answer a question, no, we didn't make any arrests yet.
So the activities that we have had, being presented, have not really been dealt with yet. Is that safe to say?
I mean, we've been following up with the
Have you made any arrests?
We have not made an arrest, no.
Okay, that's the question.
Can I follow up with that?
All right, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor Protem.
I'm just gonna say one thing. There has been an arrest, too. So what had happened, there was a postal customer that got kind of upset, and he put a tracker in an envelope, and then called the sheriff and the postmaster. And then it was a Bronco, and then it was traced to an apartment here in town. Do you know anything about that?
There's a difference between federal arrests and state arrests. So I'm assuming, you mentioned sheriffs. It sounds like a state.
Well, the sheriff was called.
Okay.
Because that person says, hey, my mail's moving or whatever. And so Kenny's Auto Service impounded the vehicle, arrested two people in the apartment, arrested the one guy in the Bronco with the mail in the Bronco. And that was early summer. And then the next day, next day, postal inspectors showed up at the impound lot, says we want, impound yard, and says we want that moved to somewhere in Torrance, to their yard.
That's Hime's case.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sound familiar?
Neither one of us work that, are working that investigation, but I did speak with the inspector today on my way here, and she's the one that is in charge of that investigation. It is ongoing.
Well, there was, there was people that were taken down for it. So when you said they weren't, I was kind of wondering.
And the apartment was filled with stolen mail.
Yeah. And I'm gonna let, Wendy's ready to go. As, as a person of some severe theft mail, Wendy wants to go first here.
First of all, thank you, guys, for coming. So, and I know you guys aren't the ones stealing the mail, so when you hear the upset, it's obviously not your guys' specific faults. But, so starting in May, through the company I work for, we have several bank accounts. I mail everything through the Bellflower Post Office. I hand-deliver it every time, inside the Bellflower Post Office. Starting in May, we started having a bunch of thefts, to the point that I've had to change 11 bank accounts. All had theft against them. So nothing was getting to where it should have been, ever. So through May, again, in June, so then I stopped using the Bellflower Post Office, because I asked to speak with the Bellflower, can't think of his title, the head guy.
Postmaster.
Postmaster. I couldn't think of his title. And I couldn't. They wouldn't talk to us. So it was like, okay, to the, called the USPIS. I did all that. I made the complaints. I did everything. All the checks started getting cashed. They weren't washing them. They weren't doing anything. They were just cashing them. And for the amounts they were written for, it was insane. All of us had it happen. So I started going to the Lakewood Post Office. Come July, I thought, okay, I'm just gonna go and give it another try. Again, dropped it off. None of my mail got to where it was supposed to go. So I've kept going back to the Lakewood Post Office. Come September, I thought, you know what? There's gotta be something that's been done by now. Guess what? None of my mail in September that I mailed out of the Bellflower Post Office made it to its destination yet. Now, the checks haven't been cashed, but it hasn't made it to its destination. I'm like, it has to be something internal, somewhere. Somebody is doing, something is wrong. But I never got a call back when I made the, I did make a complaint. I called the, I called, I was talking to somebody in the city of Los Angeles, because I asked. And nothing, nothing. We did recoup most of the money, not all of it. But, again, still had to make all the different accounts changed. It was, it's a big, huge problem.
Yes.
And it's still ongoing. Something is going on in the Bellflower Post Office. I, again, I can't say who specifically, but it's, there's a problem, a huge problem.
So we, we are looking at the city of Bellflower, and we are, we are looking at that post office in particular. We work with our Office of Internal Investigations called OIG. So the Postal Inspection Service and OIG work together. So OIG, they will work internal investigations. We work external crimes. We often work together when we suspect there might be, you know, a collusive employee, employees. We don't, we're not aware of their investigation details, but we do report to them, and they report to us. So they're not gonna tell us if they, what they know. I would love to have them here. Maybe they can help answer some of your questions. But, but again, we, it's not like we're ignoring the problem. We are boots on the ground. We're not in leadership. So we're the, we're the people that are responding to everyone's complaints. And what I can tell you is that we are quite busy responding to as much as we can.
Any other comments?
No, I'm good.
Yeah, I'll go back then. I just wanted to nip that other one in the butt.
All right, Mr. Sanzines. No, you got something else?
Yeah, I got something, yes.
Oh, okay, excuse me. You're next.
The bigger problem is internal in that post office. I've been mailing things through that post office for over 35 years through my business. It's always a joke with my vendors, yeah, I didn't get it, so stop payment and send another one. We've been doing that for decades, okay? Nothing ever got cashed. It just goes to the, some black hole where the mail goes, I guess. But now, lately, the mail getting, is getting cashed. It's getting, it gets deposited in ATM. The banks are just, just at fault, because they can just deposit something into the ATM and pay, you know, pay. They must open up accounts daily to scoop the money and then go. The problem is in that, that post office. And I get what you're saying, that all the post office boxes, or whatever, the drop boxes, you want to secure those. That's all good. The trucks need to be secured, too, because they're not secured enough, because I was here, that incident when the Jeep was out here, that the postal, post delivery man yelling for help, and we catch him over here on the fence, running away and with the mail on the ground, in the little carrier that they have, the sorted carrier. Now I go, everything gets mailed to the Carmonita Post Office on the best advice from my mail carrier. The mail carrier goes, don't mail nothing to the Bellflower Post Office. Well, I go to Lakewood. Oh, they got problems, too. So everything go, and I don't mail everything, my whole batch. When you write bills, you'll, you'll six or 10 bills, and you go to the post office, they get dumped one at a time. If I lose one, that, you know, the luck of the draw, I don't lose a whole batch. So far, so good. But they have a gate on the back of this post office, Bellflower Post Office, that is a chain link rolling gate that they park everything in. And there's a dock back there. What's been going on in the early days is the bags of mail, the cloth bags, or whatever, they get put on the dock, and these people will come, and they run to the dock, grab it, and go put it in the car and go. So a whole bag of mail go. That's how it's been going on. When you talk to this postmaster at the Bellflower Post Office, you get nowhere. Nothing. That person don't want to hear from you, talk about it. I don't know if that person is overstressed out and can't do anything, but will not talk to you about it. The mail carrier that I use actually went, and I believe it's a woman, because she said it was a woman, and said, this is what's going on. Can't we put electric gate back there and let it close? It's none of your business to the mail carrier. That's what was told to me from our carrier. She goes, you're on your own. I'll just use an out-of-state, out-of-state, next city over's post office, because Bellflower has a problem. And I get this, when you're in a business, you lean on other businesses in the neighborhood. You know other businesses. They're all having the same problem. We're all down with the bank. I can't believe the bank puts up with it, because you're trying to get your money, and you get your money 90 days later from the bank. So you're floating this, this theft for the post office that's happened. And it's never used to be that way, and it's running rampant, the theft that goes on. And, and when you have to close out banks, it's not, bank accounts, it's not easy. You gotta, you get new checks printed, you get this printed, whatever. And some of them may make you go on this special online thing, positive thing. So you gotta, you send the check, and then you gotta say, yeah, I sent that check online.
Every day.
It's crazy. It shouldn't be the way you have to do business. But, and I do notice that some post offices that I go to, because I go to a lot of them other than Bellflower now, because I might be on this side of town, I use that one. But there used to be, on some of them, a drive-up mailbox. Cerritos is a good, good example at Carmonita. They have an own lane, own private lane, where you can drive up on the property with the big four-foot-by-four-foot box to dump it. It's not there no more. They've took it out because it's not secure. You know, people drop at night, they come and fish it out in the night, I guess. But it's a big problem with the postmaster at that facility. The mail is getting, you know, stolen from the back end. And, and like you said, you probably got inside people, some organized crime on inside of the post office, and that's what the investigators go after. But it's bad. And we, as council people up here, we, the community relies on us. Can you help us? We can't. Our hands are tied. It's a federal facility. We're all going through the same, it's pretty frustrating when you're going through all the same problem, and you can't do anything about it.
Congressional inquiry does get a higher level of attention. And we can tell you that we're here. We hear you. We're not ignoring the issue. I came up here from San Diego. I'm not in L.A. And I'm here, you know, on my, I'm not getting to spend time with my family, but I'm here dedicated, because I want, I want to let you all know that we're not ignoring the issue. We are paying attention. We hear you. We will work with OIG to look into any possibility that there could be something going on internally. I can tell you that after speaking with the inspector that is covering this case, and she's investigating this case, she is also having some issues making sure that the Assistant United States Attorney takes it seriously.
Would you be willing to have a meeting, if we put together a meeting with residents in a, in a bigger auditorium, to come talk to them?
Absolutely. We've, we've done that many times. We provide prevention tips. We try to get out with the media as well, and have them get our prevention tips out there. I can only imagine what you're going through. 11 different accounts is, is
That I have to daily?
Yes.
Every time I write a check, and we still write checks, daily, like Ray said, I have to go online and agree that I wrote the check, and the person that's cashing the check, I have to look at the back now to see who signed it. Every single day, I have to do this. It's, it's crazy. It's absolutely crazy.
I, I can only imagine. I've had my mail stolen. I mean, a lot of us have had our mail stolen, myself included. I haven't had to do 11 accounts. That's, that's quite a feat.
And it's, it's ongoing. May, June, July. Again, I stopped using the post office, mailed some of the, in September, and it's still not got to its destination. I'm like, it's, it's something with Bellflower. I
It's a problem.
I know it's everywhere, but there's something going on in Bellflower. I
We see that. We see that. We hear you. We're here to, you know, answer any questions you have this evening, and to bring it to our leadership, and to really impart on them that we need to take a closer look, continue taking a closer look at Bellflower. Apart from the external crimes part, get with our partners in OIG and try to find out what's going on, because you have a responsibility to your community members, and we have a responsibility to do our jobs.
You say you're from San Diego. Is, is you up here from San Diego because it's in your region or your district area?
It's because I volunteer to do the Public Information Officer duty. And I'm here with my partner, Lucas Watanabe, who does cover this area. But because I've been on the Public Information Duty a little bit longer, we share, we share this collateral duty.
Gotcha.
A lot of other federal law enforcement agencies have public information officers, where that's their only job. They do, they don't work cases. We, we don't have that luxury. We, we don't have that luxury.
Okay, you ready for Son?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you so much for attending this meeting. Uh, I have a question. Um, can you explain, um, Project Safe Delivery?
Absolutely, you wanna?
Yeah, uh, so, Project Safe Delivery is, uh, it's a joint initiative with-
In Laymanster.
Um, it, it is just a, uh, a refocus on how we are going to keep the mail and our employees safe.
And it's a joint-
Can you elaborate that in?
Yeah.
That's still very technical to me.
So it's a joint effort between the Postal Service and law enforcement, which is us, the Inspection Service. So, the Postal Service relates to us the problems that they're experiencing, like mail theft, um, maybe weapons in the mail, or drugs in the mail, or substances in the mail that we aren't aware of, because maybe victims are not reporting them. So, our partners, the only other way we are gonna find out is from postal employees.
Okay.
So now, we're working together, they're telling, they're, they're telling us what's going on, and we're responding by connecting with them and having that communicate, that better, uh, level of communication. Because a lot of times, if, if a victim does not report the crime, how are we gonna know?
Okay, so, so what are you doing internally within, let's say, within the post office to basically detect, um, mail theft? Because I, I tell you one thing, uh, two things. One is, the problem hasn't been solved yet. Because, um, I have a personal experience, we don't usually write checks anymore. Um, we only write one check for our vendors in all the payments we make. And, uh, we use Zelle as much as possible. But four weeks ago, my wife wrote a check as a birthday gift, and mailed, and mailed the, uh, the card with a check to her relative in Salt Lake City. Okay? So before we left for vacation, she was checking our bank account. And she noticed that check number, it was multiplied by ten. The amount was ten times the original check amount written. So she rushed to the bank right away, and got a copy of the check. It was very different from the check she wrote. The page name was changed, the amount was changed, even the signature was changed. Even the memo was changed. Everything was changed on the check, except the microcode and, and the check number. So, that's one thing, I don't think the problem has been solved yet.
No, the problem will not be solved this quick. The problem is not solved this quickly.
And second thing is, I firmly believe that it's, it's happening within the post office.
You do, do you have proof, do you have any proof, or what, let me, please tell us why you believe that?
I personally dropped the check, the, the envelope inside the, the slot outside. There's no way that a, any person can, can fish an, uh, an envelope within the slot, either the drive, the drive-by slot, because it's very tiny. If it was open, somebody, somebody from the post office should have noticed that. So the check went to the post office. And nothing else. And the check was cashed ten times more than the original amount.
And you're convinced that someone within the post office has, is involved?
Well, as can it be.
I mean, your mayor pro tem here just explained that, uh, one of the methods that's, uh, mail is being stolen is from the back dock.
It happens within the post office. Because who collects the mail from the, from the drop-off box, the drive-by drop-off box? Post office personnel, right?
Yes.
And they take the bag hopefully inside, uh, by the dock, wi, within the building. So there's no one else who, who can touch that, other than post office personnel.
Did we answer your question about the Project Safe Delivery?
Yes.
Okay, great.
It's very broad, as, as far as I'm concerned, because I'm a process person. And, I, I believe that there's not, there's, it's really very easy to detect that. If, if somebody would just analyze the flow of the mail within the post office, all the securities that you can put in, it can be solved easily.
It can, thank you.
It can be solved easily.
Thank you.
But I think it's the lack of will from the postmaster to solve the problem.
Okay.
Yeah, all my mail is, was hand-dropped in the, in the post office. I walk everything, and I've been doing that for a decade.
Me too.
And there's no way it can be fished out, because, I mean, the slot is very tiny.
Metal can anymore.
Exactly. Unlike before, when you opened the, the old mailbox, you can open it, and then you can easily grab mail inside. But not anymore, those are not, those don't exist anymore. So I firmly believe that it's happening within the post office.
Understood, understood. What I can share is that, what we see as law enforcement investigators, um, what I mentioned at the beginning about the method of operation within the criminal community has changed. When they get onto the dark web, or, or the internet, any internet, apps, websites, however they communicate, they're reaching thousands to hundreds of thousands of people on the internet, teaching them and teaching each other how they operate. Because we're not gang members or, or criminals ourselves, we don't, we don't know what they're saying to each other. But what we can tell you is that we know that the message of how to commit the crimes within the gangs is reaching thousands of more people now than they were years before. So we're, we're combating that aspect, and we're doing our best with four postal inspectors to try and catch as much as we can. So we're here, telling you that we hear you, I hear you. I'm sorry your wife experienced that with her check, it's, it's really unfortunate.
And here's my, my concern, my bigger concern is, if you don't solve the problem, there's gonna be more and more people using online banking, uh, Zelle, and the number of customers you're gonna have is gonna be down significantly.
That's, and that's sad, because I love the post office. I work, I love my job, I love the post office. I'm, I'm very patriotic with our, you know, our postal system, and, and the fact that it's been such a trusted institution within our country for so long. And now, that trust is, you know, is diminishing. It is diminishing, and that's sad.
In addition to the fact of, let's say, opening, when you, when your check is stolen, the bank will say, oh, you have to open another account. That's the SOP for the bank.
Right.
But what's worse is, if a resident lost their check, the only time that they can, they find out that the check was lost is they get a notice from the utility company that their service being cut off.
Oh, wow.
Because the bill wasn't paid. And to me, that's even worse. Okay? So just think about it.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I just wanna thank you for being here. Um, I know you're, you know, you're doing the best you can, it sounds like you're understaffed in that impression. Um, I don't wanna, you know, beat the dead horse, or whatever, it's already been talked about by all my colleagues. But I think there's two things that I do just wanna highlight. One is the customer service aspect of it, from your, the postmaster, and the lack of, I would say empathy and willingness to share the contact information as to who they need to contact, understanding that, yes, they are not the, you know, they don't do what you, your, your job is, or whatever, but letting the residents know that. Because the reason why we're here is because of that. They started, our residents started calling us.
Yes.
Because there was no attention to them at the post office. There was no information provided. Our council colleague Wendy was the one who found out about this number, and started making these calls, and then we started making public comments from here. And then we reached out to our congressman, Robert Garcia.
Yes.
So I don't know how that works in your guys' infrastructure, if it has to go up to across to them, but just, obviously she doesn't belong as a post office master, because your job is to deal with these tasks, and to deal with these situations. Even just informing them, and letting them know where they need to go properly, and understanding that they were victims of a crime, would be much more appreciated than, you know, just being turned away. Um, that would be the first one. And then the second thing that I heard from you today, um, it sounds like you're having issues with their, the US, uh, Attorney General, the assistant, or which one? Who, who do we, who should we ask our congressmen, members, cuz we have two?
Yes.
Who should we ask to engage, what offices should they be engaging with, um, on our beheaths? Because that's what they're there for, to encourage them to take this seriously.
The Assistant United States Attorney's Office.
Okay. And, and we have a representative from Congress member, Robert Garcia, here.
Okay, great.
Who is taking notes, and, and I'm sure she'll carry that forward, thank you.
Yes, and they, um, congress, congressman can do a congressional inquiry, um, to the Inspection Service and to OIG. Um, and it'll help our leadership take a look at what's going on. We're here because the community is concerned. And we can communicate with our partners, um, at OIG, to take a look at the postmaster that you're mentioning. Um, we, we can't do anything of the internal investigation, we can only do the external-
No, I totally hear you.
Like, the criminals who are actually coming and making contact, maybe at the back dock, or at the mail truck, those are the folks that we were after to arrest.
No, and we completely hear that part. Um, what I'm trying to convey is, there needs to be that form of communication, though, because that is manageable. Right? How they interact with our residents, or the customer, that's manageable. Um, not by your department, obviously, they have to communicate to the other departments, or whatever. But that is, uh, something that we would ask that be, be handled. Um, because that is within our control, right?
Yes.
We can control how our staff interact with our constituents. Um, we can't control who's robbing us, and when they're robbing us, but, you know.
Right.
Anyways, thank you so much for being here again, I appreciate you, thank you.
Absolutely, yes, it's, it's our, it's our duty to be here, and we're happy to do that. Um, so, our takeaway is to, um, go back to our offices tomorrow morning, speak with our leadership, and make sure that we're in communication with our OIG, our internal investigators, to talk a little bit more about the postmaster issue. Um, and also, um, we're happy to go, what we do, we go to the post offices ourselves as inspectors, and we talk to all of the staff, including the postmaster. Um, we can do that, we can talk to them, that's part of Project Safe Delivery. We've been doing that, we'll do it again, we'll, I mean, we can go weekly if we need to, to really get that message across. Um, so that's, we've, I'm just telling you, we've heard you, and we will take action.
And I hear that, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You know, I really expected that the local postmaster would have gone to accompany you here tonight, because that's boots on the ground in our community. You know, we, we're a small town. Historically, we've always known the postmasters here, and they were part of our Kiwanis Club, the Rotary Club. Uh, we had an, an event, they were there, they were part of us. But that model has changed, whereby, they're very selective as to how they speak with us. And many times, they won't even involve themselves in the conversation with a constituent, then they come to us. And then we go to the phone number, and we get no response from you. So now we're dealing with our congressman, we went, oh, as far as we could go up the federal chain, because of that. And, uh, you said that you could attend, if we put together a night, where we're gonna involve anybody in the city that wants to come. And, uh, I would love for you to bring the postmaster of the city of Bellflower with you. And so you could hear firsthand, and she can defend herself and say, that's why this happened. This is why I do not speak to you. I'd love to have some answers, because we can't get them. But, I will have staff, uh, make arrangements that's convenient for you and for us. And one of the things that led me to believe that's an internal problem at Bellflower Post Office, and Travis, I think you're the one that told me how when we, the city sends out a correspondence, it's logged into our computer, and then it's supposed to be recognized at the post office, and they respond that they've received it, isn't that not right? When we put, put mail out to the local post office, it's logged into our computer as to what goes out.
Oh, that's if it's certified mail?
What, I'm not sure what mail it is, but any mail that we send out usually has to be recognized by Bellflower Post Office, that they've received it, and we've logged into our computer to show it was sent.
It's logged in on our computer when we do a certified mail? But for regular mail, we, I don't believe we have access.
All right, but many times, you do not get response that that mail has been, Lydia, you told me, we're not always getting res, the response that we're looking for, that we've got mail out, it's at your post office, and they're not responding to it. Have you heard that?
I haven't, but it might have came from Lydia, cuz she's the one who reads the certified mail in our office.
Leads us to believe it's an internal problem. Was it the finance office?
I think it was Ryan who helped him.
Right.
Yeah, I think it, I think it was when we have sent things out certified.
Okay.
And we have not received, that it's, that they've even been received by the post office. In this particular instance, our staff person traditionally has walked the mail over to the post office and dropped it off there. We, we know it got there.
Yeah, right.
By our staff person.
Right.
So, it somehow never got logged in.
But there's no response that said it was ever received.
Correct.
So that's why we think there's something going on in that post office.
How many checks did we get, the city of Bellflower get lost?
We have had, um, multiple checks, and some very significant ones.
Yeah. Multiple zeros.
And now, it's, you know, the time of year when you send in your property taxes. And these envelopes are pretty, unmistakably what it's in there, and those are lots and lots of money. And so, you're gonna see an uptick on this, because now is the time of year. We find that we are providing all of our constituents, uh, postage-paid envelope to send in their trash bills. Well, those often get taken first, cuz people know there's a check in there. And they're the ones that they're being worked over. So, we can see a pattern here. And we, we've lost confidence in the local agency. Uh, you're probably aware of the fact that the city of Bellflower now owns that facility. Bellflower owns the post office, did you know that?
I did not.
The building itself.
Yeah, the building.
The building is our tenant. The post office is our tenant. And so, if we had to- So, uh, we feel as though, and I haven't discussed it with everyone, that if there has to be some improvements made for security on the fencing, or a gate, or something, and that's our responsibility, we're up for the task, making sure that that post office is secure. Uh, but we're, that's how involved we are. We're the landlord for the post office.
Thank you, thank you for saying that.
Uh, recently, this just happened the last six months.
Ah, okay.
But it was for sale, and we bought it, that's the bottom line.
Very good.
Any other questions? Have we, uh, pretty well expressed our concern? I hope you can, but, um, make sure that you stay in communication with our city staff, cuz I think that it'll be a very good occasion to be have a, and the, and we'll probably have to notify it, cuz I think all of us need to be at that meeting. Uh, it'll be a public meeting, and I don't care if we do it in Sims Park or Bissell Auditorium. I think it needs to be dealt with, so that we can show to our citizens that we have not forgotten them, like the postmaster has in Bellflower. All right, if there's anything else, have we said it all?
We're good.
I think we're good.
All right, we're good, thanks for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Public comments, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. And you'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
All right, so, and now's your opportunity to come forward, talk to the council? Good evening.
Good evening. I will not comment on postal theft, since that is on the agenda.
You see, we kinda beat the dead dog on that, didn't we? Or, yeah, dead horse, whatever your animal is.
Um, I was up here, um, a, a little while back, uh, asking for council support in regard to, um, some m, m, major crimes happening in our neighborhood, and on our corner, and on a repeated basis. And, and I just wanted to thank the council, and, uh, public safety staff, and all folks. Uh, we noticed that there's, um, additional patrols, um, incidents have been down. We know the city, um, has been meeting with, uh, project kinship as well, to, uh, work directly with the youth, um, and potential at-risk youth that may be, um, in, uh, becoming involved with this sort of thing, so, uh, dealing with the whole picture, and we really appreciate that.
Do you feel safer? That's the bottom line.
Of course, as long as people aren't getting shot on my corner, I'm feeling safer.
But you know that you're, we're always willing to listen to you, and I'm glad that, uh, we were going in the right direction in your neighborhood.
Thank you, Mayor Coops.
Thank you. Anybody else have, uh, any comments? Good evening, thanks for being here.
Hey. Um, thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the rest of the city council. My name is Julia, and I'm Congressman Robert Garcia's field representative for the city of Bellflower. Um, one of the topics that we discussed with the USPS today, which, thank you so much for being here today. We, we really appreciate that we, uh, could coordinate this. But, um, she did mention that you guys, or residents, could submit congressional inquiries. Um, and a lot of, like, what people don't know that our office does is help with any federal agency, USPS and USPS included. So, if there are any, you know, instances of mail theft, or, um, complaints about, uh, your experience with the postmaster general, you can always reach out to our office. And we do submit those congressional inquiries, we get pretty quick responses, and we stay on top of it, especially for an issue as important as this one. So, please, you guys can always feel free to, to send residents our way. Thank you.
Now, I would like to think that, when we put this meeting together, that either you or our congressman, Garcia, would be in attendance. Could that be a possibility?
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, wouldn't miss it.
So we'll include you in notification when that meeting is set up, okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, is there a office phone number that you would like people to contact you at?
Yes, our office phone number is 562-512-8489. And our website is robertgarcia.house.gov.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being in our meeting.
Of course.
Anybody else like to anything on public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Sold out.
All right, public hearing, 11, where are we at here? We're in a consideration action to receive the Bellflower Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So we've got a new group of people coming forward.
While we're getting the projector set up, I'll do a brief introduction. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Item 13A this evening is the proposed adoption of the City of Bellflower Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Over the past year, staff has worked closely with KTUNA to develop this strategic tool for guiding parks and recreation improvements over the next decade. Note that the master plan is non-binding and has no immediate fiscal impact. Any future projects or initiatives related to the plan will undergo separate policy and fiscal evaluations in the future. Mr. Jacob Leon from KTUNA will now provide a high-level overview, after which we welcome your questions, comments, and discussion. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to Jacob.
Thank you, PJ. Good evening, everybody, Honorable Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for having me tonight. It's been quite the journey for the past year and a half of, you know, being able to be here in front of you to present to you the culmination of all the hard work that everybody's been, your community specifically, has contributed to this Parks and Recreation Master Plan. As PJ mentioned, my name is Jacob Leon, I am a Senior Associate Project Manager at K2A. We're planners and landscape architects who work on projects like this all over the state of California and in the western region. And so it's, first of all, I just want to say how grateful I am of the whole process. It was really rewarding to be able to connect with the community and speak with their staff about how we can make these improvements and look into the future for Parks and Recreation here in Bellflower. So what I have for you here is a 10-minute presentation, I'm gonna walk you through essentially the report. And at a really high level, I'm just gonna point out some key elements, remind the group of all the work that's been done and hopefully excite everybody, you know, for the future of here in Bellflower. And I also want to say that I feel the love with just all the staff that's behind us over here from Parks and Recreation Department. They were integral to the whole process and it's kind of nice that I'm not here by myself. It's great kind of having their support behind it here as well. So thank you, PJ, for forcing them to be here, no, I'm just kidding. Okay, so the master plan itself, the plan that we're asking to receive and file is, has existing conditions. It has a summary of community engagement and it has recommendations for everybody to review. And that's essentially the outline of my presentation that I have for you here. It was a joint effort between city staff, ourselves at K2A, and another subconsultant matrix who works all over the country on these kinds of projects. So again, I just want to give a shout out and thank you to everybody involved with that. So for those who may be viewing the recording later on of this meeting, I just want to remind the public about the fact that this is meant to be a comprehensive planning document, right? We're looking at short, mid, and long-term projects as they relate to Parks and Recreation. Things like, plans like this get updated about every 10 years. And it's about providing you all sets of goals and some guidelines, right? So you can make improvements, you know, throughout the next decade or so. And of course, with any kind of planning project, there's always community engagement. Plans like this are really important because your communities change, your demographics change, right, over the years. It's also important to recognize how critical, right, essential Parks and Recreation, open space, nature, socialization with each other is for our communities. And lastly, it's also making sure that with these planning efforts that get done every 10 years, it's about ensuring that underrepresented community members have a voice in the planning process. So hopefully you'll, when I'm done with this presentation, you'll hopefully get a glimpse that we did our very best to make sure all people, all community members throughout your districts here in the city had an opportunity to contribute. So now, existing conditions, quick overview. Chapter two of the plan itself is a robust chapter that has all kinds of existing conditions. It's about balancing an objective quantitative way to assess your parks, all 14 public facilities that you have, and understand those 100 acres of park space that you have in your city. And annotating and understanding the amenities, the conditions that they're all in. So that's included in chapter two of the plan itself. Our team came out multiple times to look at your parks, experience them, visit them during the day, during the nighttime, and just really kind of ensure that we're educated as your consultants as we're communicating and talking with your residents about existing opportunities and concerns in your parks. So, you know, just some examples and pictures here from our visits here over the past year. In chapter two, you're also gonna see several tables, maps, numbers, and text describing your park level of service. This is the standard analysis that consultants like ourselves do for every agency, city. So we can understand how you're doing, it's like a timestamp of how City of Bellflower is doing with their acreages. And for those of you who participated, which I think is all of you at our working session last year, you'll see some of these numbers, right? It's taking those 100 acres, right? It's understanding your goal of four acres for every 1,000 Bellflower residents, doing the math and understanding the deficit that the city is in, right? Which, as I mentioned in that special session with you all, that is very typical, unfortunately, of Southern California communities with the way cities get built out over the past century, essentially. We also in the plan wanted to provide some, a light comparison, right, of how Bellflower is compared to some of the other communities nearby. You're kind of right in, kind of top lower half right here with, you know, your population and you have 1.27 acres for every 1,000. So you're doing a little bit better than Norawak and Gardena, you know, just right there with Montebello. So again, it's not, it's about who's better than the other, it's just to kind of give you perspective, right, as to how Bellflower is currently doing with your current 100 acres and your population of about 80,000 people here. In chapter two, you're gonna see all kinds of maps, right? A lot of these maps are a part of our travel shed analysis, so it's us using our mapping systems and software to understand is there, what the accessibility is like between your parks and your facilities here in Bellflower. And so we try to look at that classic half-mile, 10, 12-minute walk. You know, that a lot of us planners like to try to achieve that goal, right, of making sure everybody has access within a half-mile or 10-minute walk to a park. And this, the green outlines is that half-mile distance and the blue circles, the dashlines, I'm just trying to highlight some of those gaps. These analysis, all those maps that you see in chapter two, just help us with the types of recommendations that were included in later on in the report itself. We're not looking just at infrastructure, part of our scope of work was also to work with your Parks and Recreation staff on programs and services, understanding all of the honestly wonderful things, all the robust programs and services that are being offered by the team here. It's understanding how well Bellflower is doing and again, also compared to other communities. And just really great to see over, you know, the past, between '22 and '23, you know, over 300 program registration options were available to your residents, which is pretty outstanding. You know, we want to make sure your department continues all that great work. And so again, we want to acknowledge that in the master plan itself. Community engagement was absolutely critical, it was made really obvious in the proposal. And we wanted to make sure that we responded accordingly. And so with community engagement, as you're seeing here, we had about 15 events, touchpoints with your community. So we were out here 15 times, whether it's focus group meetings, public workshops, pop-up events, like your Christmas tree lighting event. We were out here 15 times to let the community know that we want to hear from you, let us know your concerns and what kind of opportunities and projects you want to see. So big shout out to your entire community for participating at all of these events that we did over the past year. And so again, just want to make sure that it was as inclusive and diverse as possible. And just some quick pictures, I have probably over 400 pictures from all of these events at the office. But I just wanted to just give you a sample of the diversity, right, at the pop-up events like the car show, the Christmas tree lighting, doing something at Corruthers Park, the senior focus group meeting, the teen focus group meeting where we had just, you know, over 50, 60 people attend, I mean, it was just wonderful. So it was really refreshing just to see how engaged your community was with this Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We also had a survey, we had, part of our scope of work included that statistically valid survey. So 2,000 surveys were mailed out and so we had 723 responses, which is very good. 412 came back from that random sampling. And additional, over 300 people responded during the open version of that survey. And there's lots and lots of information in that survey that your team here has. But just some quick things I would want to mention, in no particular order, but important things were things like access to walkways, playgrounds, a new aquatic facility, more special events, picnic areas, courts, athletic courts came up often. Other things that were communicated to us at each event as well was public safety, right, making sure people are feeling comfortable within their parks, maintenance, right, making sure our parks are looking good so that people feel safe and comfortable in them as well. Were also recurring themes communicated to us throughout the process. So all of this, let's fast forward, right, and over the last four months, we were working together to present to your community and your staff here the recommendations. So recommendations are in chapter four of the report, they're broken down into four overall topics, right? We have these initiatives, these overarching blanket statements that are almost like your, they're not quite policies, but think of them almost in that sense, that you can use them to help guide and make decisions. We looked at opportunities within your existing parks, because that's the classic low-hanging fruit. What kind of improvements can you do to your existing parks to help fill some of those needs and deficits that were identified earlier on? We also had the really fun opportunity to look at future park opportunities. So putting together some conceptual designs to, and give you a menu of options, right, for the, as your city continues to look for parcels or redevelopment opportunities to include more parks. And we have some supporting text also about creative solutions. Those initiatives that you see here on your screen, we have eight of them in the master plan. Things like connectivity, programs and services, equity and access, safety and comfort. You can read more in more detail in that section of the plan. Here's an example of a cut sheet. This is, these are the, what is included in chapter four, the recommendations of the types of improvements that we can make within your existing parks. Not every park received a cut sheet like this, but what I'm showing you is an example of Corruthers Park. Where there's potential, right, to continue adding things thoughtfully, right? You can hire a landscape architect to really look at in the future how we can maybe add some of these amenities to help address some of those needs. And so we have text recommendations, there's a table, a matrix as you see there. Again, guidance, menu of options, you're not being tied to these specifically, but it's to help you make informed decisions as funding becomes available and you look at these specific parks. In that chapter, we also broke out some short, mid, and long-term goals. Think of these like the quick and easy things you can pull if conversations are taking place. This is a very small sampling, there's a more exhaustive list in the report itself. But short-term items like improving playground or like rubber surfacing around playground equipment as a short-term, midterm projects or goals, or those are in the five-ish year range, right? And those are like putting together a master plan for like a new aquatic center, that sort of thing. A long-term goal would be over the next 10 years, let's work on our relationships with like the school district, right? Or let's look at getting that funding needed for, to install a big facility that is expensive. So these things, these types of things are outlined in this section of the master plan itself. Again, this is just a sampling of it. And now, as I mentioned, we also had an opportunity to look at future park, we were able to look at future park opportunities, right? And so a city like Bellflower that is pretty built out relies on purchasing land, right? It could rely on the limited number of parcels that may be undeveloped or, you know, vacant. It also is about getting creative. So what we did for you all in this plan is give you a menu of designs, these conceptual drawings that take, that are made up of different acreages, shapes, and sizes so that you can envision what are the possibilities. So you have examples here like pocket parks, mini parks, right? So think of a little lawn area, maybe a playground, maybe a bench, right? These are, that we can embed in your neighborhoods, right? These don't take up a lot of space. If you look at linear corridors like the bottom example, this courts, sports courts complex concept that we put together, it's like, okay, how do we add maybe more pickleball courts, or can we do some multipurpose courts? Maybe a synthetic turf, right, with strapping for different kinds of sports. Think of like your utility corridors, right? Maybe in the future, things change, right, and there's maybe more flexibility. So things like this could be implemented along those lines. We did two concepts where if you were to have a larger parcel of land, maybe what does a multipurpose official synthetic turf field look like, or vice versa, maybe what does an aquatic center look like? And lastly, linear park, very similar to like Palm Park, Palm Avenue Park. So again, we wanted to provide you some concepts and excite you all, right, of the possibilities that are here in Bellflower. You also have in the plan renderings, right? So we put together these 3D renderings, again, to motivate everybody and excite people about the possibilities. So we did these renderings, added some of the branding, like the Brim van that your team here uses successfully throughout the year to, again, try to re-envision. So here you see the pocket parks, linear park concept. We also rendered what that aquatic center could look like. Again, these are really useful tools that you can use as future, like, for example, grant opportunities present themselves. We wanted to equip you so you can compete effectively, right? And I think that was our commitment and our responsibility to you to set you up for success in the future with this master plan. And we also did some night photos because we know sports and recreation is not just a daytime thing. So you also have some of this in your arsenal to really effectively compete and think about the possibilities here in Bellflower.
Real quick, before we get to the next steps, can you go back on the renderings? I just want to give some Bellflower perspective to you guys so you could kind of have an idea on these concepts that we came up with. Go back to the very beginning of these where, and right there, yeah. So the one on the left top was an address, and these are just sample addresses we used, but I want to give you guys an idea. The top-left pocket park was a, at the time, and I'm not sure where our ownership is of this, was 9443 Artesia Boulevard. So it's a very small, it's a very small lot, but it gives you an idea what we could possibly put in a small lot like that. The one on the top right, that is one of the utility corridors on, let's see here, Park Street, south side of the street between Lakewood and Passage Avenue. So that's a utility corridor there, similar to what we have at Zen Park. But that's something that could be there and it gives you an idea of the area we were looking at just as a sample. And these would be like puzzle pieces, where could we put a lot that size, a type of park? The one on the bottom is Andy's Lot, so you guys all know that, right next to Riverview Park, which would be difficult to get to, but I thought, let's come up with a concept that, what could we actually put there and use that as a, the exact acreage that we could put there? So that was a concept we came up with of something that could be put on a property that we own already that we've been having difficulty finding a use for over the past several years. If you go to the next one. And then these two, you can see the acreage is exactly the same on these. This is the Bay School Lot, right next to Thompson Park. And we, due to the grant funding we had specific to this design, that's why the aquatic center is there. But you could take that aquatic center and put it back in the footprint where we have it now. So that's what those two are. And then the one on the bottom, that is the Caltrans parcel on Palm Street behind the Habitat for Humanity. So that's what that parcel would look like, similar to Palm Park. So I wanted to just give you a perspective of the lots we were looking at and give you some just Bellflower insight on those. And they could go anywhere, it was just the size of lots that we would look at, so.
All right, great, thank you, PJ. Okay. This does conclude my presentation, but we wanted to, of course, and writing on the slide here, the, I'm here to answer questions and PJ's here with me too, but we're hoping that today, receive and file, right, and adopt this master plan that a lot of, your community and a lot of people have put work into. And as it was brought up at the very beginning, right, there's no immediate fiscal impact. This is just, this is your tool, your document too, so that, I guess PJ could get to work real hard over it. And, you know, to, you know, look at all these great possibilities. And again, I'm really grateful of how rewarding this entire project was for myself and my team and just being able to connect with your community and maybe one day I'll be back again, again, working with you all in the city. So thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
I appreciate the presentation, I really appreciate the fact that you recognize PJ's team and himself, that he's got a great team and they do wonderful things with the limited amount of land we have, with all the programs and stuff. And I always appreciate someone that doesn't live in this city, that comes and sees and compares what we have compared to other cities, how great it truly is. And you've given us that attaboy and I'm sure PJ and Kirsten and the rest of that are here tonight appreciate knowing that as we compare to other cities, we're holding our own.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, start some questions here. Mr. Sanzinez, any developer, any questions on what the future looks like with Parks and Rec?
It's, thank you Mayor, the future is bright. Thank you so much for this very comprehensive report. I mean, there's so much to digest. I didn't finish reading the whole thing, but there's a couple of things that pique my interest, if I may. Just to, just to kind of share your thoughts, on page 123, one of the recommendation here is reorganize staffing to better meet service needs. Can you give me a kind of a flavor in terms of what kind of organization do you see within Parks and Rec?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to do that, and is it appropriate PJ for you also to jump in and help with questions? If I, yeah. That question, that recommendation stems from the fact that your, your community, they recognize all the great things that are happening. We always want more, right? With more means more resources, more staffing resources. And so it's about having ongoing conversations, like every other year, every year. I'm not going to dictate how internal those conversations take place, but it's to be conscious of, will we need to re... Will your team have to reorganize itself and maybe add more staffing resources to continue that great growth? And meet that level of service that your community expects? Think about like, if we want to, for example, one of the checkboxes that was not checked is like adult sports programming. You will need to look into potentially bringing in another staff person to deal with that. If you have a new aquatic center, right, you may need to restructure your staff a little differently, right? To now hire and really accommodate this new program, right, and the infrastructure that that would bring in. Or if you look at your, your teen senior center that's coming right at Sims Park, that is another example of like that staffing restructuring concept as well. So that's kind of where that comes in as a reminder, hey, don't forget.
So when you say reorganize, it's more of adding staffing instead of, I thought there was something to do with shifting responsibilities, things like that, or changing titles? So it's more of adding more and more staff?
If, if I may, it, it does go into a little more detail later on in the report specifically. And, and one of the things is our department traditionally has been heavily facility-based. Meaning we have our, our core supervisors are tied to Sims Park, to Thompson Park, to Carruthers Park. And the, the trend in Parks and Recreation, and we've actually been moving towards it the past few years, has been more programming-based. Letting those, your, your top people have more top-level programming, strategic planning, stepping away from the daily customer service thing. Now, that doesn't happen overnight, it, it does happen over time. With that, there is going to be a demand for more programming. Our programming is light, and that's what the community is demanding. So with that, we, there, there's a couple of different steps that we're looking at and what the plan calls for. One would be restructuring, reorganizing with different, different duties and responsibilities with the current staffing we have. And the other thing is if the council does want to add youth and adult sports, more programming, you know, a lot more special events, depending on where we go. Then we may look at additional staffing. But that's not, that's not necessarily the, the demand for it. It, it, it's all going to call on what our programming, what policies the city council wants, wants to drive. So we've, we've kind of looked at both things, we've already been reorganizing and we will continue to be. You were on one of the tours we took to the senior center in Norwalk, where I think all of us, our eyes got really big when we asked them how many full-time staff they had at that one facility.
Twenty-one, wasn't it?
Correct, it was very large, so we've always been the department that does...
And you gave us a hint already.
But we've always, we, we've always been a department that we will, we will make whatever happened, the policy you put forth, and we'll make it happen with the team we have.
So the realignment that you're thinking is possibilities more along the lines of program instead of silo, so to speak?
Yes, correct. More, more in general, more like our special interest classes, putting one person in charge of all of that program. Rather than you're at Sims Park, this is your duties, your, your team. And we've been moving into that a lot, because we're, we're special event-heavy. So a lot of our, our staff at all the sites, they work together for special events. So we've already been doing strategic planning over the past few years, and this has helped accelerate that and give us ideas. And you'll see in the short-term goals, it does say reorganize, it doesn't say start adding staffing. When you get to the mid, to the late, it does say, if you want to grow in those programmings, there is going to be a time where you're going to need additional staffing too. So we, we have taken a tiered approach as far as how that was laid out in the, in the recommendations. And we, Jacob's team, they've been amazing to work with, but he'll tell you, he came in with the initial draft, and I said, let's, let's go to work on this. And we did several rounds of, we need to organize and, because we, we know this isn't binding. This is what we want to use for you at the city council level to provide our policy moving forward, and it's a good start.
Yeah, and again, you mentioned, it's a roadmap for us to kind of follow. The other thing that was, that was, I got interested in, you mentioned about relocating the skate park from Carruthers to Thompson Park. Any, any, any reason behind that?
Yeah, and you can jump in as well, but we were, as we're, not only, well, let me back up. My background is in landscape architecture, so I look at, when we're doing field visits, when we're engaging with the community, we're thinking of like this planning-type master plan. I'm also looking at the infrastructure, I'm looking at the context, the, literally the, the location and the, the way it's designed. And when you couple that with some of the comments we were hearing from some of the community members about the maintenance of it, or just some of the things that maybe are happening there. And it feels disconnected, right, from the rest of Carruthers Park. We think that there could be a much more, in the future, more appropriate location to have a more centrally-located skate park that is highly visible, easily accessible, easily maintained. So that you can have people of all ages and abilities use it, create more community pride, because skateboarding community is very active throughout the state of California. So we just think that there would be an opportunity to relook at, you know, a different location to just give your community a better experience with that amenity itself, and maybe repurpose that space into something else.
And i-if I may on that one, I, I, actually, I think that should not have been included for Tom, for Thompson Park. So I may have missed that one. It should be relocated, period, but not, I want to keep it at Carruthers Park, but down in Carruthers Park proper. And we're going to have an opportunity to do that with the upcoming, the water pipeline project. I would like to see it remain in that general area and at Carruthers Park.
That's what I was kind of, I was kind of...
Correct, and, and again, it's just an option, it's, it's nothing, and actually, I've already been talking with a potential designer to at least start mapping some things out for Carruthers Park. Because that, that project will be here before we know it. I think the main language in there regarding the skate park was find an alternative, because it is in a bad spot. It does, it does attract nuisances, it is difficult to maintain. And that's why when we do go through this project, I, I do want it moved. The, the other main recommendation for the skate park that K T U A did make, and I 100% back, is do not get rid of the skate park in the city. Because there is a need for it, there is a demand for it. So not eliminate it, but to find a new location. I just think the proper location would be down in Carruthers Park proper.
The recommendation was to relocate, yeah, okay. And one thing that we have to be cognizant of is, it goes to a lot of the recommendations here in terms of facilities. We, we are constrained, if I recall correctly, in terms of certain areas where we cannot build facilities. For example, Riverview Park, we cannot even provide restaurants because of the restriction, things like that. So that's one of the constraints that we have to overcome to make our parks more viable. Again, for now, those are some big questions, I mean, there's a lot of things to read here, and it's a good start. All right, thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd like to start off by saying thank you for the work that you've done and for the time that you've put into it. I've seen you at many of the events, I almost thought you were a resident at one point.
Maybe someday, right?
Maybe someday. You know, I, coming from, one, being an employee of Parks and Rec at one point, for five years, then being a commissioner for five, or for four years on the Parks and Rec Commission. And then planning and for four, and then now here. I got to tell you, you know, PJ came up to me on Thursday and told me to read this thing, to look through it, I was excited, I am excited. I think the future is bright, like Councilmember Sunny Sanzinez mentioned. I'm also the council member on here who brings a perspective of a young parent with a five-year-old, with a 15-month-old, and with nieces and nephews. Neighbors, like the Burkeys, who on a weekend, we will go to the parks, and we go for an hour, we go for two hours, you know? We enjoy the amenities outside and stuff like that, we're looking for those amenities, right? So I'm thinking from that perspective, and so when I breeze through this, when I look through this and look at all the pictures, I mean, I mean, some of these amenities is just really awesome, right? Some of these examples. And I'll be honest with you, the first thing that comes to my mind, and this means no disrespect to the past or the, you know, past leadership or whatever, what have you. I mean, like, man, those would be some cool things to have in Bellflower. I know PJ and PJ's team have been bringing on some cool things, and we are doing some good progress, and we're looking forward to that progress as it's coming in, the new playgrounds and things of that nature. And so I want to start off by saying that, that we do have some cool things coming, but this and having this, and my biggest fear in having this, and why I'm kind of coming at it this angle, is having this and it shelving, you know, getting placed on a shelf and us never addressing it. One of my first concerns after PJ came up to me, I talked to our assistant city manager, or deputy city manager, and I said, you know, how do we go about making sure that this becomes a conversation in our budgeting process? In our vision, you know, strategic planning that we're about to do and go through? Because it really highlights some of our strengths, but many of the cool areas where we can definitely enhance our Parks and Rec programming. Not just from a staffing perspective, but also from an amenities perspective. And so with that said, I'm going to kind of poke at this a little bit here. Sustainability and stewardship kind of came to the top for me rather quickly. Can you elaborate a little bit on what you mean on your objectives under 4.17?
Let me go to that one second.
That's page 124.
Thank you, Councilmember, one second, I'll go there.
And before you start, I'm, I'm bringing these topics up because these are, I think, low-hanging fruits within this master plan that are easily attainable.
Yeah. This initiative is one that's, you know, and it's not obvious to a lot of people, right? I mean, we talk about sustainability, that is a term that gets thrown around a lot, right? Some could argue it's like a greenwashing term, right, like, yeah, sure, the S-word, you know, you throw it in there, check the box, that sort of thing. But I think something like, I'm really glad this made it into the plan, because we're growing up in a society where we're not thinking about the outdoors and the environment, right? We're growing up and, and I don't mean to get preachy with what I'm saying right now, but it really is technology, it's our phones, it's kids, people. We're not outside as much as we used to be, so generally speaking, right? And so this, with this initiative saying it's about, we need to remind our community members about it's that stewardship, it's our responsibility about appreciating the outdoors, the environment, and all those benefits that come with that, right? There's the whole biophilia, you know, concept of like us connecting, just being out in sunshine, touching the grass with our bare feet. A lot of that comes with this, and I think that's where sustainability and stewardship initiative, and there's much more specific objectives in the appendix about how your city can try to achieve some of these things. But I, I think that's my initial answer to that question, and I think it is, it could be low-hanging fruit, right? Like, could there be like a program or a class about, you know, looking at, like, for example, your new butterfly garden park that you have, right? Using that as an opportunity to have like a, an educational opportunity for your community. So that's, you know, something that comes to mind, yeah.
In the, I guess what I'm, on that section, to minimize the impact of sun, heat, and wind, what do you have in mind with that? That's, that's what I'd like to focus on a little bit.
So if we can go to 182, it's a little more of the detailed of the action items specific to that.
1.4.
Right.
Councilmember, you were mentioning the, which one was it?
It's, the, the objective is ensures parks are designed with sustainable design elements and include a feature, features that minimize the impacts of sun, heat, and wind.
Yeah, I mean, that is, that is a response to the, the urban design of Southern, of a lot of Southern California, or even in California itself. And so it's reducing urban heat and effects, so if you think about, can we make sure there's trees, there's enough trees, there's enough shade structures? If you think of playgrounds and having shade over playgrounds, it's looking at any kind of, if you're going to be installing, for example, a, or redoing a parking lot, and you're going to have, let's throw up some solar panels. It's kind of like touching upon those general overarching elements with that.
Yeah, so curious, you know, interestingly enough, this weekend, a neighbor, and he left, Mr. Cody Burkey, he showed me a map of Bellflower. If you look at an aerial view of Bellflower, you can actually see that we are very poor when it comes to trees. You can see that the city of Lakewood has heavily trees, Cerritos heavy on trees, Downey, even Downey is heavy on trees, especially the parks. That's one of my concerns, right? When I take my kids to Sims, and we walk over there, I live right down the street. We can't, we go, we put sunscreen on, we're there maybe for an hour, an hour and a half, and by the time we're done with that, we have to go, because they're exhausted. It's hot, you know, you give them water, but their kid's running around, at the end of the day, you know, you have to be a parent, you got to take them out of that heat. It, it's mainly in the summer times, don't get me wrong, right now, it's easy, it's a no-brainer, but in the summer times, it's extremely hot. And when it gets over that one, you know, you're trying to go to the park for that fun enjoyment, you want to get the kids tired, you want to put them to bed early. Anyways, I end up, and I'm going to hate to say this on public record, I end up, we end up driving to Cerritos, we end up driving to Lakewood. Because the playgrounds are shaded, they got those amenities, and I think that's what I'm taking away from that, that section, I want to highlight that.
Yeah, and item 1.3, actually, on this page here speaks specific to that. So identify Parks and Recreation facilities in greatest need of additional shade and develop a plan to increase shade where needed. So it's definitely something we've heard, we, we heard it last budget cycle. I've, I've already got a plan presented to me from USA Shade for the upcoming budget cycle. You know, if we want to invest in more, with the lack of trees, if we want to invest in more permanent shade structures, that's definitely, and then future parks, definitely. And, you know, we always run into, so, talking about the utility use lot, so Constitution Park is a big one. So shade was an issue that we talked about, but it also became a hindrance of visibility, the residents. So we made sure that, that playground that we've designed there is tucked under a tree. So those are things that those type of properties, we got to take into account, but definitely the, the shade issue is in here and is part of, a part of the plan for sure.
Yeah, and so, you know, again, I could, there's a lot of other things here that were exciting to see. I think my colleague, Mayor Proton Dunn, would agree with, under the 91, there definitely needs some improvement there on parks, we see that in the map. We have some, some area that we own, some properties that we own, I'd be interested in considering those kind of pocket parks in that area. The, the, again, coming back to that first comment, or the second comment I made, which is making sure that this doesn't get shelved. I'd like to ask the city manager a question, is what's your plans on bringing this forward? How often are you going to ensure that we're looking at this so that it doesn't get shelved in our decision-making process?
It's a great question, and actually, I would expand that a little bit further from this specific plan, as you all are well aware. You're going into a process of starting some strategic planning holistically citywide to give your staff some direction. As we start bringing those things forward, my goal is to take these and let staff use them. When we present you with a project or an item, we're pointing back to these plans and doing that, so we can be saying, hey, we're ticking the boxes of these plans, and we're continually looking at them as we're going forward. When we bring you budget items for discussion, we're bringing those recommendations based off of these plans. As opposed to just bringing you recommendations out of the ether and bringing you our recommendations that may very well be good recommendations. We have something to point back to that comes from the community and comes from you guys to say, this is the policy you've established, this is where this project is coming from, and that's why we're presenting it to you here tonight. So I, I would envision these things being a regular thing in front of you, at least if nothing else, in a staff report saying, based on the Parks and Recreation master plan, this project is coming forward as project, you know, new park, whatever.
So staff will initiate a, a bit of that conversation and bring some of these back?
Projects back to you all? Yeah, I would, I would argue actually that your residents have initiated the conversation.
No, absolutely, the residents have, yes.
Which is why this is such an important model, because it's coming from your residents, it's coming from you all, giving us direction of the things we should be working on going forward, as opposed to us just bringing you things that we think might be a good idea. We actually have a basis to work from now. So that, that's the importance of something like this.
Got it. Um, and then, um, the other thing that kind of stood out to me was in the, under the administrative section. Um, this was your section about establish and improve process with Public Works to increase the quality of park maintenance. What made you suggest that or why, um, or do you, what's your thought behind that?
Yeah, I'm really, I think, great question, councilmember. I'm glad this made it into this section as well because most of our, our projects and our clients, Parks Recreation, Public Works, or the, the administration, the staffing, it's always the two departments, similar to what is happening here at Bellflower. Uh, in a perfect world, each hand is talking to each other, um, successfully, um, routinely. Um, but you can't always help but to feel like you're also sometimes in silos, right? Like, there's frustration sometimes, right, with something might be happening, you're trying to tell Public Works about this, that it doesn't, and, or vice versa. Um, it happens, this conversation is at every single Parks and Recreation Master Plan that we work on. And the reason I'm happy that it's in here is because it's a reminder for you all how much hand-in-hand Public Works plays in with this, because your, your team is doing a great thing with the special events, the programs, the services, um, staffing, these facilities and these parks. Um, but the main, the, we're a species of first impressions, right? It's, things need to look good in order to feel comfortable and safe, right? And so, and that's where Public Works comes, that's where their role comes in. So, um, it's just like, and it's like, it's a reminder that we need to be, you're, you're all encouraged to be talking to each other constantly, so you can maintain that high level of service, uh, for your, that your community expects. PJ?
Uh, and I'll add to that, um, part of this, part of our stakeholder meetings was specific with the Public Works Department, was specific with my staff as well. So, uh, some of this did come from our staffing and our, our discussions amongst staff. And, uh, we've discussed it, we meet regularly with the Public Works Department a- at our facilities. Um, the one thing that I definitely did add in, in, into here was, uh, some type of technology work order system between our supervisors at the park and the crew leaders, just to make sure we're on the same page with, with work orders. Um, but i- i- in general, um, it's just always trying to improve our processes, al- always looking at things, how we can improve our communications and um, having two different departments, we work closely together and everything that we do, special events to our parks. Um, so it is important for us to c- continue that and to always look for ways that we can improve that process as well.
Yeah, and, um, you know, when I was looking at the report cards, because every park was issued a report card, uh, and I, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I'll speak for myself at this point. The safety and comfort or the maintenance and the lighting and the good visibility, we, we pretty much, with the exception of maybe two parks, everything's with the C or under, C or D. Uh, so that would be my initial first concern, if we were to add more parks, right? Can we maintain what we already have? As much as I, I would love more parks underneath the ninety, under the ninety-one, south of the ninety-one, that's one of my, would be one of my concerns and something that we need to figure out as a, as a body. Um, because, I mean, you look at some of these pictures, Butterfly Park, for example, you know, I mean, it's brand new and it's, and that's in your district, right?
And your name's on that plaque.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
And I, the, the staffing evaluation, so there, there was an evaluation of both the Public Works team that maintains the parks and then the Parks and Recreation teams that runs the programs, uh, operates the facilities, things of that nature. You'll see, as has always been the case in Bellflower, we do what, we do more with less. And, but it, but it has become very difficult, um, over the years to maintain that. And with the larger parks with Riverview and, and Palm String as they came on, the, a- as, as acreage grew that we have to maintain, um, the, the, that, that curve on the graph didn't grow as much with manpower, um, and, and that's something we, we, you as city council need to evaluate as, as we move forward, and you're absolutely right. It shows that in the, in this,
Absolutely.
Um, plan.
And, and PJ, Ryan, city manager, you know, my colleagues, I'm not, my intent here is not to try to throw anyone under the bus. I, I think we have a great staff. I think, like I said earlier, like our council colleague, my council colleague said earlier, the future is bright, we're doing a lot of good things, we've got a lot of good things, the ball is rolling, right? But as we're looking at this, this is not just, I think this is triggering a, um, you called it a restructuring, reorganization. I think it's going to do that for other departments as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, right? And I think that's what the exciting part is of the strategic plan that we're going about, because obviously we want, you know, As all, all across the board here, but anyways, I, I think I've, I've made my point. Um, I know, I know your department specifically too is one of those that gets everything, you know, you know? We want a, an event, special event, last minute, you know, it goes your way. We get that and we understand that and we appreciate you guys. Um, and so I think this is definitely exciting as we're going into the strategic planning, and so I just wanted to highlight it for us to think about it, right? As we're, if we're wanting more things, what does that mean for us structurally as an organization? Anyway, I'll get off my box. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you go in, uh, I just want to prove that Councilmember Sanchez's name is on the plaque.
Yeah, for the whole world to see.
Okay.
Can you share, can you share that with them?
I took it, I took it on Sunday.
Yeah, it's fairly recent, so.
Send them the photo.
Yeah. Ms. Morse, have you any comments?
Uh, first I want to say, PJ, your team does an incredible job, like, everything, the events, I, I'm astonished at the stuff you guys pulled off all summer long. Incredible, all of you, incredible. Um, I enjoyed looking at this and reading this and I, it's, it's a lot. Um, I think this is an incredible tool of what the future looks like and I, I love it. I, there is, yeah, looking at the report cards, there's improvement, but that, it's now noted, it's here, it's in front of us, we see it. Um, the community engagement, incredible. Since I've came on council in this last year, from the very, when we, we all did the, um, workshop, uh, seeing you guys at all the pop-up events and the different community, I just, I, all of it was just great. Um, and well-attended. Um, the one thing that I, I was enjoying reading and then the action plans and stuff, um, when it was the programs and services, like incorporating different programs or adding the, um, the recreation options to better serve the special needs residents and families, huge, huge. I was like, right on, you know, that's huge. So that was the one thing that I was just, I was really glad to see, and I'm looking forward to, to watching that grow. Um, so really that, other than that, I just, I have nothing but praise on what I see and again, you guys already, you guys have a great team, all of you, so that's it.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor. What a highly valued, comprehensive report, and it's amazing, like, uh, Wendy said, it's a lot of reading, but it was pretty nice reading. We usually read a lot of boring stuff. And it was kind of exciting, had plenty of color, pretty pictures in it. But it was, it was good. But I, I was kind of amazed on the report cards, it's kind of where I'd focus, because everything is, you know, future and stats and whatever, and and the report cards got me is, is, can you get an F? Or is it just stop a D?
In my seven years of specifically doing Parks Recreation Master Plans, I haven't given out an F. So I'll get back to you, councilmember, if that ever happens.
He's not looking for an F.
Why I asked, why, why I asked on, on the park identity on, on Palm Park, none of those boxes were checked and it got a D. So I didn't know if something was missed or we didn't check any bo-, you know, they didn't check the boxes, but then, yeah, courtesy D. That's why it is, that's why I asked the question, and, you know, little humor. And then, and on our Butterfly Park, which Councilman Sanchez already caught it too, it's a brand-new park and we can't get well-maintained on it. Everything's brand-new, the seats are brand-new, shiny, the concrete's not stained. Everything looks good unless, unless it was, they showed up on the day when the, when it opened where the grass was burnt, I don't know. But anyway, but I just didn't understand a well-maintained park, I mean, there was, hadn't even maintained anything, it was brand-new.
Do you recall when that was? Because the grass was dead or, or it looked dead.
It's dead in the, and it's a little burnt in the photo too, I don't know.
Would you ever plant reviews in an interactive park?
Probably not, no.
And if it's not property, and also we didn't any grade for property lighted or good visibility, if, if that's the case, we need to go back to the architect and tell him he did it wrong. Did it wrong, because I would think when you design these things, you design it for the optimum, uh, visibility and light or whatever, but it's not a perfect science, I know that, but I was impressed with the report cards for each park. It gives us a starting point. It gives me a feel knowing that what every park here looks like, and I, I was a kid that, you know, raised in those parks and I kind of know where all the nooks and crannies are. Um, but I kind of focused on those, those report card, uh, in the parks or whatever, and then, and then over in Victorville, the Constitution Park that's there that we got reopened, even got pretty good grades.
Yeah, better than the Butterfly Park.
You got three Bs. Yeah, but no, it's, I was glad to see, because the Constitution, if anybody knows the Constitution Park, we actually removed everything and, and stopped it. Took the picnic tables out, took everything out and came up with a plan to come back, combat and put a nice fence around it. Now it's, uh, uh, locked up at night, so you don't have any bad elements getting in there, and it seems to be working with the, with the new amenities that we put in there. So that thing is, is, uh, doing well again. Um, with that excellent report, great job, great presentation, and your personality complements us, because you can tell you really enjoy what you do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
PJ, we have, and I've lost track of some of the revenues that we've received, you've made some applications to the county, and we've been awarded monies for different kinds of possibilities. Where do we stand? Have we spent much of that? Is it still in an account somewhere? I'm trying to.
There's, there's lots of money in different little pockets. I, I, I will, I think I can make an announcement here without Kristen yelling at me, but we did just get past our final hurdle with HUD, so we have some, uh, uh, projects that'll be moving forward that have been waiting there, and one of them is Constitution Park, the Brim Vans. Uh, so we have those grants, but we also have the Measure A money, which is, I think, the one that you're mentioning, which is
Quite a bit of money.
The, the county money.
Yes.
And we get approximately four hundred thousand dollars annually, and it gets banked away, and, uh, we
We got one year behind us, or how many?
Uh, we've got several. So we just spent a million on the designs, uh, the, the, the construction documents for the Oak Center, so that was part of that money.
Okay.
We have another five hundred thousand dollars allocated to the multipurpose, uh, uh, new ballfields going in at Sims Park, which has kind of been sitting there. Um, and then we have, uh, there's several projects in the budget. Um, the new lighting, uh, field lighting will be coming to Thompson Park and Carruthers Park. Uh, the Sims Park will also get new lighting, but that's part of that overall, all, all project.
And that's reimbursed by the reservoir that's being put in there, correct?
Uh, yes, there's a lot of, there's a lot of storm, stormwater capture money going into that, that's the majority of the money. And then we're just putting in a little bit of our park money, but we, annually, we get a little bit of money, uh, or not, not a little, but we get four hundred thousand, so. Kristen, do you know about how much we have in that right now? So we have one point eight million in that, and that's, we, when we come into budget time, which we're getting ready to go into, we plug that in into where we think we're going to be able to, uh, use that. We also were able, so the, the, the pretty pictures, uh, that Councilmember Dutton was talking about, a lot of those were an add-on to this, um, uh, this project due to, uh, that same Measure A money, but they call it Technical Assistance Program, uh, for, uh, cities that are park-poor in acreage, and we, we're in that high category. So we were able to get that fully paid for with those funds this year. Uh, we also are using those funds as part of the construction management, um, with, um, the Oak Center coming up. So the, there's a lot of different money coming in and it does, it does build up and, and we, we have some projects, uh, that we allocate them to. Um, the, the one thing, you know, y- you saw, and you, you guys brought this up when we had our committee meeting, um, uh, about two hundred and sixteen acres short in parks, we're never going to get to that, and we're not, we, we won't. But this gives us an idea, if we can find a ten, ten thousand square foot lot in a neighborhood that there's a park need, we can maybe look at purchasing that, and there's money out there, uh, for us to get assistance at times, and if not, um, maybe it's something we fund as well, and then we can build a park. And there are, on, on some of those park concepts, there were some general ideas of what that would cost us to do. And if we can, uh, you know, as, as Councilmember Sanchez said, if we can get some low-hanging fruit on some of this stuff over the first few years, just, you know, let's do it. Let's pick some of that stuff off with this plan, and we have some funding for some of that stuff.
You know, some of the parks, you know, our major parks are well-used and you, we know that. Pocket parks, um, the jury is still out with me as to whether or not they're effectively being used. I know they're a maintenance item, um, do the neighborhoods in which they're placed actually enjoy them or are they more of a detriment than an asset? Likewise, I think about, uh, Riverview Park. How is that being utilized? You know, we spend a lot of money just on water, keeping the grass over there. And I think at some point in time, we need to somehow, I don't need a census for Thompson or for Carruthers or for Sims, but some of the parks that are not heavily as used, I think the council would be interested in knowing, as we develop these parks, how are they being used? Are they truly an effective way to make Bellflower a better place to live, or are they being ignored? Um, if they're not staffed because we don't have bathrooms there, what are they for other than to jog or walk and how much that activity goes on? But I think for me to make the right decision as to how we're going to expend money on parks that are not in the main core, I would like to know, s- at some way, I don't know how you do it, that's, if you got to put somebody out there for a week and count bodies, but I think, as the council agree with me on park usage, that, you know, how can we best spend our money? That the citizens of Bellflower get the best bang for the buck, you know? I mean, it's one, acreage is fine, but unless it's being utilized, you know, run cattle on it, I don't, I mean, do something different. But, uh, just think about that, that I would like to know how, um, our pocket parks are being used. I think about that parcel we discussed on Artigia Boulevard, on, near the DMV. I wouldn't mind seeing that being a pocket park, but I would like to think that you would take your, and it's not far from your house, that rather than going to Sims, you say, hey, let's go over here. But you got to feel safe, it's got to be shaded, and it's got to have some things there your kids are going to enjoy, you know, and
I, I frequent, uh, Palm Park and Sims.
Right.
Those are my go-tos.
And hopefully you feel safe there, that's the correct requirement, you know? But anyway.
There's times.
Yeah, yeah, you know when to keep riding. Sometimes we get out of the car, sometimes we don't, but.
And I, I think one of the ways we have started to, um, help with that is our Park Patrol program and getting our, our staff out there a little bit more, just to put eyes o- o- on the parks. And one of the recommendations is how we design new, new future parks, and to make sure that there is security elements taken into account at all times. Can we close that park up or not? Um, you know, because, a- and what we've had to deal with in the past is if we've, let's say Constitution Park, when it didn't have a fence, there was no staff out there to lock it, and when we do put up a fence, we don't have enough staff to go out there seven days a week, open it and close it on a consistent basis. So, um, if, if we build those elements in where we are securing the parks after dark and, and no one's going in there, that does take manpower to get out there, and, and that is one of the recommendations, is to expand that program a little bit more, to expand that even with Southwest Patrol, and maybe something that's, we're looking at getting them keys where they can open and lock since they're here a lot more too. So those are things that we're, we're also evaluating and there are recommendations for that. But I do think if you bring positive activity to those pocket parks, you're going to have less of the negative activity. Um, but it's always a catch-22 with parks and, uh, you, you know, how do you keep the bad elements out?
Well, that's the challenge.
It is always the challenge.
And when, you know, it does my heart good, I, Brim was operating on, uh, your street in the last few days, Maple and Ardmore, and I thought, that's really cool, they've come to them, they're all having a good time. I really support that program and it sounds like HUD does too. They're going to give us a chance to get more vehicles, that's good. Then I look at, you know, our newest park over there, Butterfly Park, which I Then I look at, you know, our newest park over there, Butterfly Park, which I live very close to, so I see it every day. It turns into a parking lot for the guy that's working on Mercedes. He brings his cars over there and uses that parking lot to the cars he's repairing. That's where you go to pick them up off our lot over there. That isn't what it's meant for. But again, we, we develop these things, but we need to make sure that they're being used correctly, is what I'm trying to say.
And another thing I took from the plan as I was reading through it and we had a meeting with Jacob and his team was, uh, you know, I just had a note. We need to have, we need to activate outside of downtown a little bit more with, with events, even very small events. But even at the parks and different things, we need to get a small, but again, that takes manpower to get out there. And we have, we have one Brim team, one, you know, but there's different ways to do it. And it's just, it's good for us to see that in writing of what can we do? And then as we're talking about reorganizing our staff and giving them different responsibilities, I can tell one of my staff members, your job, special events. Now I want you to activate smaller events at Riverview Park, at Palm Park, at Constitution Park and get out there in the community, even if it's once a year. But you have an activity that's out there to activate it, to let the community know in that general area that you do have a park here that's positive for you. So those are, I, this plan had all, I was so excited to read over this plan. I took a whole weekend and then, you know, redid it. And but there's a lot that, that we get from this that we can do. And it's, it's a good tool to have to plan and where are we going with it? So your, your concerns are, are warranted. And then to your point, too, for tracking activity, that's always been a, how do we do that? And there is technology out there now, too, that we're looking at, that we may be bringing that during budget time of
I know we've got cameras coming from
Yeah.
the different offices. I'm not, a permanent camera, but put it up for a month.
Yeah. And, and there's different ways we can do that to track it in real time. And a lot of it's done directly through phones now. And they, they, they track who's at your parks at what times and different things. So we'll look into that a little further and see what costs are.
I'd love to develop more acreage, but I want to make sure the acreage we're using is being fully utilized.
Yeah, agreed.
It's just not a place to go mow the yard and say it's good for a month or good for a week. And I think that when we go through the budget session, you provide us the monies that you've set aside or been receiving from the county or the state or whoever's the giver of it. And so that you have your input as to what you believe is the appropriate place to use it and when. But you can hear the council wants to have their fingerprints on that as well.
Yep.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to add, oh, go ahead. Oh, I wanted to add on the activation component that PJ is talking about. It, it's going to take time, but I can definitely say that our marketing has completely, I mean, improved tremendously.
No, the brochure that we put out in the spring, fall?
The brochure, Instagram, our marketing supervisor is doing a tremendous job. I mean, the type of, uh, content that, that, uh, staff are putting together, i- 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 is, it's with the times and it's ahead of them, I think, ahead of some other cities. And I think that, wha- what I want to say with that is the activation component is going to take time. But with the Brim and with these other kind of reorganizing, and I like to, I'm looking forward to seeing what that looks like. Uh, but activating these parks, right, that have, don't have normal staff on them all the time, will improve their, their usage.
No, and the, the Brim concept can work in those parks. You bring the Brim to those parks and invite the neighborhood. That's, we're not blocking streets. We're utilizing the dirt that's there.
I, I was asking Humberto, um, the other day, how many of those do they do? How many visits, stops do they do a year? They do about 125, 130 something a year.
And we used to run two vans, didn't we?
Years ago, yes. Uh, the, yes, we did. But yeah, we're, we're about, I think, a hu- 100 deployments, approximately 100 deployments per year. And 5,000 plus attendees that, you know, through Brim.
A- and these are things that have a significant impact on, on our youth. You know, help them stay, you know, on the straight and narrow kind of a thing, for lack of a better word. It's the activities. That's what's exciting about the, the teen and senior center as well. We're going to reactivate programs like that. I remember the teen center and how popular that was amongst teens, you know? And so anywho, I, I, I think it's going to take a little bit more time, but it's going to take restructuring. It's going to take, um, you know, taking a deeper dive into these things.
And one of the things I've thought about, and I've never really pursued it because we've had plenty with COVID and everything. I'd like to conduct these meetings, city council meetings, several times during the year, off-site at Sims, at Carruthers. And say, okay, we're going to be in your neighborhood. We're going to have a council meeting. Please come. And, and we're going to expose you to what we do. We're going to come to you instead of you coming to City Hall. And just get more involvement and, and have every district have a chance to be able to conduct a city council meeting. Takes a little logistics, but I think in the long run it'll pay off that we can prove to these folks that are, live in that area. We've got what we've got here for you and you're not utilizing it, you know? But anyway, thank you so much. That was very productive. And, uh, you know, we went from the negative of the postal service to the positive.
Mayor?
And everything in between.
I got one more ad.
Okay, Mr. Dutton's got another question.
PJ, you brushed on Pace School and I know we had the examples up there earlier. So you know the question. What dialogue we got going with it?
Any at all?
Very limited and they're starting, they're, they're expanding. They're actually expanding. They're putting more stuff on there. So, uh, whether or not that's going to be available at any time, I, I don't foresee it because of what they're doing. But that gives us an acreage to look at that if we were to purchase something, the possibilities we could do there. If it does come available or if we do see it slowing down again, um, I, I, I do think if, if it's something you want to pursue, then we need to look at how we do that and what type of dialogue we make with them. But currently they are, they have activated very heavily over there. They've, they've added, uh, bungalows, uh, for school and they're, they're getting ready to expand further. So.
All right.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
One more thing, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The three, the few, a few of us attended a, a recent event for our outgoing, um, speaker, emeritus, Rendon. And, uh, and in, in conversation, we talked to a few others, we've talked to some senators, right? And we were wondering why some other cities get 11 million, you know, 10 million, um,
20 million for a high school?
20 million, you know? And, uh, the feedback we got was, well, you know, we tend to give what we, what people ask for. We'll give some of those larger ones less than what they ask for. My, my point being is, I have a saying, right? If you don't ask, you don't get. When we're looking at this, let's bundle these things up so we can go for bigger amounts. We're due for an 11 million dollar, you know, state funding grant for our parks or whatever it may look like. So, um, let's not ask for one, you know, 500,000. Let's go for a big enchilada this time. Okay? Thank you. That's it.
Yeah, when I was at that event with Rendon, then I, I was reluctant to mention that we, we got $800,000 because I thought everybody's going to be upset that Bellflower got so much. We were the scrawniest pig at the trough. No, they says, well, they built a new high school in Linwood and he paid for it. A whole high school. Then I didn't feel like I'd said the wrong thing at all. But anyway, any other questions before we move on? Or now we're going to ask the public. Please come forward if you want to offer any of your insights on what we want to do with the Parks and Rec. Or have you heard it all?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Oh, wait, I'd like to make a motion. Is there a public hearing right now?
No.
Oh, it's a item of consideration.
Okay. I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and adopt the City of Bellflower Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
I'll second.
Oh, all right. Thank you, Wendy.
I was like, whoa.
I was going to die.
It is that controversy. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Appreciate your, all your time.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny, by Victor Sanchez, and it was supported by Wendy Morris. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Santinas.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton.
Aye.
Councilmember Morse.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Coops.
Aye.
All right, 13B, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to hand this one off to Serge U, actually.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council and residents of Bellflower. We're, uh, gonna start with the exciting technology, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I can't wait.
No.
He is part of Parks and Recreation, so this is a continuation. He, it's going to be fun.
What, a little more enthusiasm, please.
When we last met in, um, April of this year, um, I shared the, the state of our city's IT infrastructure and I highlighted critical areas that, um, that needed some improvement. Now, since then, since then, I'm pleased to report that two of those projects are now complete. The first one is computer refresh. Um, we replaced outdated computer models with a new Dell computers. And the second project is penetration testing. A special thanks goes to Councilmember Sony Sante, uh, Ines for connecting us to CJPIA, which enabled us to complete a security assessment and penetration testing. The results of this testing gave us clear understanding of our security posture and will help us to plan for future improvements. Tonight, I'm here to present, um, the next two projects for your consideration and possible action. The phone system replacement and network upgrade. As we discussed in April, our current phone system vendor, Mytel, has announced the end of life for our system, making migration necessity. The key goal for selecting a new phone system are seamless integration with Microsoft Teams, the high reliability and the user friendliness.
Technology.
Technology is everywhere. After analyzing options based on Gartner reviews and our internal research, we have identified four potential, um, providers for evaluation. Ring Central, Call Tower, Zoom and Eight by Eight. For detailed assessment, we partnered with Packet Fusion. They helped us assess the current phone system, connected us with the new providers and led the detailed comparison. Each vendor was evaluated one on future set, integration with Microsoft Teams, failover capabilities and cost. Based on this criteria, Zoom Phone System emerged as our top choice. It integrates seamlessly with Microsoft Teams, so users won't even notice that phone calls are being handled by Zoom. In addition to usual, usual phone system features, some of the new features include access to desk phones, access from desk pho-, uh, desk phones, computer applications or mobile devices. The ability to move live calls between devices. Elevation of internal calls from voice only to video calls, voicemail transcription and more. In addition to Zoom Phone System has impressive uptime record with less than four minutes of downtime over the past year, demonstrating exceptional reliability. Finally, as shown on this five-year price comparison chart, Zoom offers all these features set at competitive pricing. Zoom is represented in a blue color. Here you will see the phone models we plan to use. The top model is standard desk phone for general use. The middle model is designed for operators and the bottom model is intended for conference rooms. Over the past year, we have implemented several key software upgrades, which combined with the new phone system have increased our network demands. To, to support these demands, it's now essential to upgrade our internet infrastructure. So we propose the following improvements. Increase internet speed at City Hall and enhance high availability architecture. Replace outdated 4G failover devices across all locations with cable internet links. And upgrade primary internet lines at selected city sites to enterprise-grade fiber connections. These additional upgrades will ensure more reliable connectivity to support both the new system and our ongoing city operations. As we conclude the presentation, staff recommendation is to approve the proposed information technology plan to improve internet service speeds, internet infrastructure redundancy and failover capabilities. And to replace the city phone system and the needed equipment. And authorize a total budget amendment in the amount of $98,500 in various telecommunications, contract services, information technology and equipment budget accounts as needed for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
If I understood it, I would ask a lot of questions. Yeah, we're getting new phones if we vote for this.
So are these going to be?
So anybody wants to ask a question, have at it.
Going to be a voice over the internet?
Yes. It's a cloud, uh, cloud-based hosted system. Um, it's voice over IP. We currently have voice over IP, but we're hosting internally. This will be cloud-based system.
Will be there, will there be texting from the desk, desk phones? Can you test, tech, will be able to test?
Text.
Text people out in the field through a desk, uh, office phone?
There is a chat capabilities, uh, in, in building teams. So all employees can chat between each other. If you call this texting, then yes. Uh, if you mean texting to outside, uh, then
Outside, like if Public Works, the office administrative, administrative needed to text a, uh, employee on a, on a phone out there, they can text them or something. I don't know.
Yes.
I'm just.
Yeah, this is available actually today.
Yeah, okay. Oh, we can do that now?
Yes.
Got it. That's all my questions.
Well, that's a good one.
Will this improve the, the phone syst-, uh, obviously it'll improve the phone system. But I know there's been a couple of times when I've called City Hall in the last couple of year, or I'm sorry, in the last year. And the phone system's been down completely. I assume this is going to bring that out of that.
Correct. So one of the slides, uh, showed the reliability of, uh, Zoom. So they had in the past year, only four minutes of downtime. And this is spread out. It can be a few seconds here and there. Uh, so with this kind of reliability, I think we're looking good. Uh, obviously things can happen, but, um, the, the tracker record is very good.
Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, um, is there a specific reason for the need to have Zoom connect to Microsoft Team? Is that?
Yes, that was, uh, intentionally done because we want to, so uh, on the last presentation, I was talking how we, we need to connect things together so they are not running separately. And, uh, by, by having this connection, it will allow us to, to use what we currently have with the new phones, with the new phone system. So it will be a combination of things. In other words, uh, we have these Microsoft Teams right now and we're just adding the capability for the phone calling inside of Microsoft Teams.
So do, currently do we have both, um, a licensing agreement with Microsoft and a licensing agreement with Zoom?
Uh, we don't have a licensing agreement, uh, with either. We, we purchased the licensing from, uh, from Microsoft for, uh, for our email. Um, and after this, if this gets approved, we will get the, um, agreement with Zoom.
So essentially it'd just be combined. So essentially if you're going on a Teams meeting, you also can go on a Zoom meeting using the same platform is what, is what I'm understanding.
Yes, you can say that.
So you don't have to go to Zoom? You don't have to go?
No, you will still go to Zoom. Yeah. So Zoom will be handling the dial tone. When you, uh, when you open Teams application, you will have a section to, to make a call.
If I may ask, what's the price difference between GoTo and, uh, and, um, and the Zoom platform or the Zoom combined with Microsoft?
Uh, GoTo was not part of this, uh, assessment. If we go back. So these, these four companies, Ring Central, Call Tower, Zoom and Eight by Eight. These were the ones that we, um, looked at.
They're the one that fielded the best on that previous slide, right?
Correct. So if we go back one more, this is the Gartner review. And GoTo is not really, uh, considered that great at this point. Um, but this is 2023. There is no 2024 report yet. So they may, may stand up higher in 2024.
The price significance, if there's a price, that's, I mean, if, I, I, I use GoTo.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just familiar with it.
Okay. Okay.
And never seen any problems with it.
Okay.
Never seen any downtime on it. So, you know, just curious.
And if I may, we're...
I'm trying to find you money for your parks.
The Zoom functionality that we're working is more on the phone side of things than the teleconferencing, correct?
Correct.
So the teleconferencing, we already have. We already have with Teams. So this is mainly the phone functionality of Zoom, and it integrated best with the Teams, which Microsoft and Teams is our main technology system that we use as far as our operating systems, our email, everything like that. So the Zoom conference call, that's not the main functionality we're going for here. It was the Zoom phone, the telephone functionality that would integrate.
And I guess my question would be then, how frequently are we needing that service? I mean, because it's... I'm just gonna put it this way, it feels like a luxury than a real, you know, than a phone. Yeah, thank you. I heard you. Oh, it was you. Yeah. So I'm just curious.
A luxury to have phones?
No, no, no. The luxury for it to like be Zoom and to be connected through Teams. I mean, are we gonna use it? Are we really gonna use it, or are we just gonna have something?
It's the phone platform of Zoom. It's the phones that is the main thing.
So the equipment?
The licensing is the phone functionality, the telephone functionality of Zoom.
So Councilmember Sanchez, if I might, as an example, right now, we have Mitel running our phone systems, but they're not integrated with Teams in any way, really.
Right.
I mean, in some ways, they're integrated with our email system. For instance, I can get a voicemail in my email.
Right, you get the... It tells you, it sends you the message that's inscribed.
Right now, we're using the phone systems to do phone things, and it sends me email with a voicemail. But by integrating Teams, which our staff is using more and more and more, even in the year that I've been here, I've watched that increase more and more, integrating the phone system with that, as an example, we can take a Teams meeting or a phone call all from the computer without ever having to touch the phone, or vice versa. It just makes everything work together.
Right, no, GoTeam does the same thing. I'm just wondering if the price differences, you know, and how realistically are we gonna be using this feature of it being that integrated to our Microsoft? That's all.
I think I can answer this because users will not even know that we use Zoom, to be honest. So they will be only presented with Team option.
Well, that's my point, because it's not just a budgeting increase of the initial cost, but you're also increasing a monthly cost of $3,600, right?
Yes. So this is a combination of Zoom and Teams licensing.
Oh, okay. Oh, combined?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that includes the Microsoft licensing for our emails and for everything?
Correct.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought it was just for the phone only.
No.
I don't wanna be paying $3,600. Anyways, all right. I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Santenaz?
Mayor, thank you, Sergio, for your comprehensive report, which you made it very exciting.
I'll keep trying.
Just if you can educate me here, in terms of the internet, so we have three providers, TPX, Frontier, and Spectrum.
Yes.
So which one does what currently?
So we have a combination of services in different sites, and the intent of this is to organize them more logically, who is providing what and where. So we currently have all three. We use all three, but we're gonna use them more strategically, right? So we're gonna use Frontier mostly for primary connection. They will be providing fiber lines where they can do it. Spectrum will be our second.
So the Frontier is gonna be used for all City Hall, substation, Public Works, and Parks and Rec?
Correct. That's the intent. And then Spectrum will be providing the secondary coaxial connections in case the Frontier goes down, so we can rely on secondary connection from Spectrum.
So it's a backup?
It's a backup.
Okay, all right.
And then TPX is providing that solution, which is switching actually between primary and secondary. So they will provide the actual appliances and the actual service, which can sense that this link is down, so we will fail over to this link.
So their function is more delineated in a way as compared to the current approach, kind of hush-pudge?
Correct.
Okay, all right, good. That's very clear. And then in terms of the phone equipment, are we gonna be replacing all the office phones?
Correct.
All the receivers, everything's gonna be changed?
Yes. The current phones are not supported on the new phone system.
Okay, well, when you say about 4G, it's about time to upgrade, you know?
Right.
Because I don't think 4G still exists, right?
Well, we have it here. It still exists, it's just...
We're the last one standing, I think. If it breaks down, you have no more support, right?
We can get some support. The problem with that is the speed. So we use 4G for those backup connections, and if the primary connection goes down, we are down to very, very slow speeds. So while you can open Google and search things, but opening something meaningful and downloading stuff is barely possible.
Okay. Are all the cabling done for City Hall? In terms of internet, all done? No, no, for City Hall. Are we all done with all the cabling here?
Yes, will be some additional cabling for if we need to run the fiber connection, but it will be done by the provider.
Okay. So that's part of this cost that you're asking us to approve?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes.
So I guess the cabling, so all the existing phone lines going to the phone on the desk, are they all, is it Cat 5 we use, or is it Cat 7 now?
It's a combination. Could be Cat 5, Cat 6, yeah.
It's already been up, the phone lines have already been upgraded to the computer type of line.
Right. Yeah, we don't need to run the...
The two-wire phone line's not there no more, so we've already, the infrastructure's there.
Yes, we just need to replace the actual device.
Plug and go.
Yes.
All right, and what I'm hearing is from staff is that we need to make a determination on this soon because our contract runs out January 1, and then we'll be dead in the water.
It's not January 1, I think it's in February, but yes, it's close now.
We need to act on this rather quickly to make sure that we have no downtime. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so I would invite the public to come forward if you have any questions. And seeing none.
Okay, well, Mayor, let's do it fast. We're running out of time.
Well, you've been holding your motions to yourself. You didn't do much for the parking rec deal.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed information technology plan to improve internal internet service speeds, internet infrastructure redundancy, and fallover capabilities, and to replace the city phone system and the needed equipment. And number two, authorize a total budget amendment in the amount of $98,500 in various telecommunications, contract services, information technology, and equipment budget accounts as needed for fiscal year 2024-2025.
All right, there's the motion.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santenaz, supported by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton. Please pull the council.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Moving right along, 13C, Mr. Smoot.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna hand this one off to Len, but I believe we have one conflict.
Yeah, I just saw you were gonna announce it first, so then I can follow your lead.
Does it handle it off?
You're gonna read the item into the agenda?
He needs to know what he's dismissed from.
Item 13C and...
Throw him a bone here.
Sorry. Item 13C is consideration and possible action to review the citywide fence installation program utilized for vacant lots and right-of-way areas for community aesthetics, beautification, and security purposes.
Mr. Dutton?
Mayor, it just so happens that I have a property conflict with one of these areas in this, and I'm gonna have to recuse myself tonight.
Duly noted. All right. Mr. Gurek, you'll make the presentation?
Yeah, absolutely. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Just real quick, the item we have before you tonight is more or less an overview of what we've been doing for the past year with some different types of security fencing that we use throughout the community. And then a discussion about whether or not the city council would like to expand the program out. So currently, we have approximately $135,000 budgeted in this current fiscal year, and that's for essentially a two-pronged fencing program that we do here in the city. What you have on one end of it is the vinyl white Kentucky split rail fencing that we use on some of the private property lots that we struggle with, and code enforcement kind of, you know, runs the exercise of getting the property owners in compliance. So we use that as part of a decorative look to what is essentially, you know, kind of blighted areas. The other type of fencing that we budgeted for is a heavier duty, not necessarily wrought iron, but certainly not chain link. It's more of a heavy-duty fence, and you will see it at Constitution Park. So it's the type of fencing that we actually have out there at Constitution Park. It's called a Design Master style fence. It's very specific. It's heavier than chain link, a little more difficult for people to vandalize and break through. But, you know, block walls aren't even, you know, foolproof these days. If there's a will, there's a way to get through a fence or a wall with the public. So the second one that we're looking at doing here, and what we budgeted for, was to try to address a couple locations along the 91 Freeway. So specifically behind the motel there at Clark in the 91, we budgeted $105,000 for that location as well as underneath the wood roof in 91 Freeway overpass. So that was done as part of the budget. That money's in there. An issue that we continue to run through or run up against is just dealing with the state and Caltrans and getting these fences permitted. During this time in between permitting with Caltrans, I think we've all noticed that there's some new chain link fencing that's going up behind the motel over there. How that survives or performs remains to be seen, but we can always back out that portion of the Design Master fence if we don't want to do it right there. We still continue to move forward with Caltrans. So in addition to all this, to what we have in place, what we've seen is kind of an uptick, you know, from the public. I think they've seen some of this type of fencing. They've made inquiries as to whether or not we can encase some of our other smaller parks with this style of fencing. They've certainly asked if we can take a look at doing more of the split rail Kentucky fencing. So we're constantly kind of receiving inquiries and feedback from the community that have, you know, ideas that we could utilize either style of fence in other locations. So one of the things we've done the last couple weeks is the Public Works team has gone out and just kind of tried to identify some areas. Mainly, we're looking at, you know, specifically the Caltrans fence. And you have this example, what I have up on the screen for you here. This is the area behind the STG Auto. This is the south side of the 91 between Downey Avenue and Lakewood Boulevard. It's accessed by Passage and Palm. This is an area that, let me just show you the next picture here. This is the current state of Caltrans' fence. And this is, I don't want to call it their best effort, but this is something that we certainly report to Caltrans on a routine basis as it relates to them trying to secure their property or keep their property secured. But this is, again, this is just along the Passage and Palm area. So what we looked at, go back here. What we looked at is one of these locations that staff identified is this stretch along Palm Avenue, right here, and possibly entertaining the idea of doing the Design Master fence in place of the chain link or directly in front of the chain link, to be honest with you, if we don't get cooperation with Caltrans staff. But this is one of the locations that we were looking at, and this is a replacement of existing chain link. Then you go to two very problematic areas for us, which is the dead end of Beach as well as the dead end of Palo Verde, Palo Verde cul-de-sac on the south side of the 91, and Beach is on the north side of the 91. As you can see from these existing photos, there's just, there's no deterrent whatsoever. So it invites trespassing through the city's property, which then leads to the state's property or Metro's property, and then the flood control property. So there's just a daily, almost hourly, act of trespassing by the public, whether it's with their vehicles, with their bicycles, with carts, that occurs at this location as well as that segmented, that small area north of the cul-de-sac at the end of Palo Verde. So we also identified these two areas as potentially being candidates to install that fencing. So this is just a quick look of what the Design Master fence is. And, I mean, this is what we have at Constitution Park. Like I said, it's certainly heavy. It's a little more sturdy than your typical chain link. It's not necessarily fortress-looking, like you see with big wrought iron fence. And the way it's designed is if something does occur, if there's a cut, a break, you know, a grinder that's put through it, a giant hole cut through it, these panels are irreplaceable. We could certainly just bring out a new panel and unbolt the old one, swap the new one in, and walk away. And we're not left with, you know, the kind of the shoddy, you know, patching that you see on chain link fencing, or, you know, missing bars on wrought iron fencing. So I think we prefer this style. It's not the cheapest, it's not the most expensive. It's kind of the middle of the road for us, which leads me to kind of some of the costs that are associated with this. So this is just mainly a giant spreadsheet that we did of linear feet of existing chain link here in the city. And so we've gone out, we've received some price estimates for it, and in total, you know, if we were gonna try to replace every linear foot of chain link that's on the ground with this style fence, you know, we're gonna run into something in the neighborhood of $1.6, almost $1.7 million. So that's certainly not what we're trying to accomplish today. But what we are trying to accomplish is see if there's desire on the council's part to perhaps look at the three problem areas that I just went through with each of you, which again is the dead end of Palo Verde, the dead end of Beach, and then this segment of Palm Street, Palm Street, South and 91 Freeway. Again, we've reached out to contractors that... Again, we've reached out to contractors that work specifically with this style of fence. We obtained a quote. These three locations right now would tap out at approximately $336,000 in total. The bulk of it, a little over $200,000 of that would be just on the Palm Street Park or the Palm Street segment alone. It's the longest run of linear feet. And that one's, you know, a little over $200,000. But at this point in time, what we don't have is, we don't have a budget for this. So if the council, following discussion, if they look to move this, move any one of these three projects or all three of these projects forward, we would certainly have to receive direction to do a budget amendment in whatever dollar amount the council sees fit for this project. So, in summary, we currently have programming here, some fence program that we're using. We're looking at possibly expanding it because of the inquiries we're receiving from the public as well as, you know, identifying these safety areas or these areas of concern for, you know, trespassing on the city property as well as just the complete annihilation of the state's fence that I've shown you in the photos tonight. And if there's a thought of expanding that, then certainly the Public Works staff would go ahead and run with that, move it forward and start working the process with Caltrans to get these areas approved as well. So with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions the city council has this evening, but I'll leave it to them for discussion.
Thank you for the report. And wondering, you didn't quite indicate for sure that the Caltrans fence, which is all trampled down, would go away. Would you build a fence right next to that and leave that junk there? Or would Caltrans come and remove that before we start?
Well, that's Caltrans' decision ultimately, right? So, I'm gonna ask them to pull their fence and let me slap this one in there and we're gonna pay for it. We're gonna maintain it. It's a great deal. It's a great offer. I've made it to them a couple times and they've been dragging me through the mud with their permitting process. So, if I continue to get dragged through the mud, then I'll simply, if I have the space, I'll put my fence right in front of theirs on my property. Or I'll put it in the public right-of-way property, not in the state highway. But again, I need to make sure I have, you know, ADA clearance for the sidewalk path of travel and etcetera. So, but worst-case scenario, I would look at moving it right in front of theirs and not touching their chain link at all.
Second question, since we seem to have passed the measure for charter cities, which would cause us to have a different price point based on prevailing wage, are the numbers you're indicating tonight with a charter city amendment or with a general law city?
No, that's with the general law. So these are, you know, we asked the contractor to price it at that time, a couple weeks ago, not knowing, you know, what the outcome was gonna be, but just under the guidelines that we have to follow, we asked him to price it at prevailing wage rates. Following, you know, kind of Tuesday's election, we asked him to look at possibly pricing it out for us at non-pervailing wage rates. We just have not received, as of this afternoon, we had not received anything back from him regarding that. There's a reduction. It's a reduction in the labor cost, not the material cost. Not the material cost, but I mean, there's, it would be less than what I showed this evening.
So, 397 is the big number for all three projects?
336.
336.
Correct.
And it would probably-
At prevailing wage rates.
Right. Have you any idea the percentage that might be less? 20, 30, 40?
On the labor side of things, probably 30%. Not 30% of that total budget.
No, I know, just 30% of the labor.
Yeah, probably in that ballpark, 25 to 30%.
And how much labor is there of the 337?
It was a lump sum. He gave us a cost per linear foot lump sum.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have and let's start over here with Sonny. I'm sure the wheels are turning.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I understand the frustration about this. It is something that we need to address, but at the same time, I'm kind of thinking that we need to be more cautious. My first question is, the example that you gave us on along Clark Avenue between the freeway and the motel, that's the Design Master fencing? Or not yet?
Well, that's what we requested a budget for as part of this past year and the council approved that budget. However, somebody else is putting chain link fence up there right now.
And that's the treat of the state?
And my permitted application has been in with Caltrans for close to almost six months now.
Okay. So my point is, from my perspective, the new fencing works. And the reason it works because there's no incentive for someone to camp on the other side of the fence. And I think that one thing that we need to solve here is not the fencing alone. It's more of to provide deterrent or disincentive for them to camp out beyond the fence. Because until we address that, the fence is a deterrent, but it will not prevent them from going over the fence or cutting the fence and for us to fix it again later on. So I want to kind of take a two-pronged approach here. I know there's some areas that we need to have some kind of fencing to provide some kind of deterrents. But at the same time, I want to repeat this, we need to kind of discourage them for going over the fence in the first place. Because why are they going over the fence? Because there's something for them to rest, to sleep, to camp out and things like that. Because until we remove that, the fencing will be broken into and we're gonna be maintaining it. And the second thing that I'm concerned about is if we touch on a Caltrans property fencing, that means that we're gonna be responsible for maintaining it forever and ever. Is that correct assumption?
Well, that's, yes, that is correct. But even if we go through the, all of the channels of doing it properly with Caltrans and going through the right-of-way division, getting the permit, we're still agreeing to do that anyways.
So once we start doing it, then that's-
Once we start doing it, we're, yeah, we buy it, we own it and we maintain it, which is good and bad, right? So now I don't have to wait for them to fix it. However, there will be a significant maintenance cost.
It's gonna be costly for us.
Yes.
And that's where my dilemma is in terms of ongoing maintenance and also deterrents. So, is there a section of these three locations that you mentioned? Is there a certain section that is owned by the city that's not Caltrans-owned?
Yeah, the last two. So the segment of Beach, I have enough space, what you can see there in the lower left-hand picture, behind the back of curb, I have enough space to do a fence and not have to touch Caltrans' fence at all. And then when you get to the actual dead end, that's all of the city's property before it ties into-
The one on the right?
The Metro segment, yes, yeah, the lower right.
So because the concern is people are crossing into that because it's an open area, right?
Yeah, I mean, what you have right there is a giant gate-to-camel lot, right? It's down. There's a bridge across the moat. People get this, just sit and travel 24/7 right through that little patch of wood chips up under the Metro Bridge and down into the riverbed. And the same issue exists over here at the dead end of Palo Verde. You go, you walk 10 feet up that hill and you're under the bridge. You rock, walk 30 feet to the right, you're in the riverbed.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but these are all on city property. So, the fencing can be done here without any involvement with Caltrans. On the Palo Verde one here, we'll have to work a little bit with the private property owner, but we've been fairly successful in doing that. When someone sees we're doing something to improve, they usually hop on the bandwagon and want us to help with that. So, I don't foresee a problem there. It's just making contact with the resident.
So will it be feasible to kind of start with sections that our city owns first and see what happens?
Absolutely. And see how it holds up?
Right. And at the same time, we can work with our state legislators and see if they can provide some kind of assistance to take care of the Caltrans section and fix it. So we don't use a lot of city money for fencing. So that's where I'm getting at. If we can do that in the meantime, we can test whether this new kind of fencing will hold up without investing a lot of money. Because I know for sure they're gonna cut through this. Guaranteed. No matter what we do. And I just, I know we need to do something, so I'm trying to kind of think of a way that we can provide some kind of deterrents at the same time, not invest a lot of money at the same time. So anyway, something to think about?
But what you're saying is you would rather see us develop a way to keep the the people that are trying to cross that area that are living in the riverbed.
On city-owned.
City-owned, and I think they're coming from the San Gabriel River.
Right.
That's where they live. And so we need to work with eliminating those camps
Right.
before we proceed with the fence.
And not that, no, no. We're gonna put the fence on city-owned but not touch the Caltrans section.
All right, well, that'll still give it an opening to come through then, won't it?
Well, if we, well, I don't know.
No, not on Palo Verde or Beach.
I think what Councilmember Santenaz is getting at is in these two particular areas, we have city property within which we can work. The Palo Verde and the Beach Street, we have city-owned property we can work on.
So fences there would give us a solution?
Well, I mean, it'll give us a deterrent. I'll put it that way.
Just like anything else anyway. I mean, we're buying deterrents here.
The challenge in these two particular areas, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember, is slightly less than the challenge with regard to Caltrans. When we're working with Caltrans properties, we run into the difficulty of working with Caltrans. In these two particular instances, we don't have that hurdle to get over. We could work within the city property. I think that's where Councilmember Santenaz is-
I'm just kind of, just reiterate, I'm agreed to have some kind of fencing, but what I'm suggesting is let's start with city-owned section first.
And leave Passage alone for now?
Pardon me?
Leave Palm and Passage alone?
Is that Caltrans? All Caltrans? For now?
Well, let's hear from the man who's got the district.
Yeah, I mean, look, man, where do I start? 30 minutes ago, PJ presented an option for that area, right?
Yep.
That would be nice. That would be the ideal situation. In the sense of what it would do for that area, it would improve the area. There's families in that area. They heavily participated in the park master plan. I'm regularly in touch with a lot of those families from Vance Mobile Park. I get complaints from that area all the time. I direct them to staff all the time. There is massive encampments going on. If you drive over there right now, it's horrible. It is the same problems that my colleague Dunton is having. You know, it's bad. It's really bad. The fence, I understand, is a deterrent. It's not a solution. Not a full solution. It's not foolproof. And so my first question would be to, even if we were, if we were even to do, you know, a fence, is that fence, would that fence be reusable? In other words, would you, if we were to put one in, would you, in the future, if we were able to get a park permitted by Caltrans? Because that's the end goal. That's the North Star, right? I want to be very clear. That's my North Star. If I could, if we could put a park there, that's what I would like for us to do as a body. On Palm Street, on this area. Clear it out, make it, clear it out, put some effort into it, just wipe it, be responsible for it, just like we do on the other side of Palm. And in between Clark and-
Virginia.
Virginia, thank you. That would be ideal, right?
Is that a level piece of ground or isn't that an inclination up to the freeway?
It has potential. They drafted, in the park master plan, they drafted a sample of what could be using that footage and that layout. They literally provided a sample what could go there specifically. PJ, do you want to speak to that for a second? Just to reiterate it or back it up?
Yeah, the designers took into account everything, the slope and what would need to be. There would be a larger retaining wall needed up closer to the freeway. They evaluated all of that, but it's, the design in there is very specific for the linear, similar to Palm Park, but it took everything into account there, the slope, everything else. And there's actually some built-in features in the sample design they did of some wall-climbing features and different things like that.
Right, so that would be my North Star. Right, that's my end goal. That would be the end goal there. So I'm willing, I would be willing to forego temporary fencing in that area or this type of fencing in that area just because I get it. It'd be, one, it'd be a waste of time or money and resources if we want to pursue the North Star, but that's what I want to make sure that we're gonna do. You know what I mean? I want to make sure that we're gonna pursue that. Because if not, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for this fence as a deterrent for an area that is heavily impacted. I mean, you could see it. It's clear night and day.
Fence itself.
I've sent pictures to the Senator. When we had the rainstorms, you know, that whole area flooded. This whole area is under, you know, under-maintained and just completely in disrepair. I mean, it needs a lot of work. It needs a full-on retaining wall. There's no retaining wall for the residents that live in that neighborhood. I mean, you can see the railings right there. And so that brings me to my next point. We have a vacant ordinance in the city that we can apply to residents. Caltrans, why can't we apply that to Caltrans? Why couldn't we do that? I mean, at what point do we say, you know, enough's enough? I get it, it's a state agency, but Jesus for crying out loud, they don't take us seriously. They don't. So, do we sue them? Do we initiate litigation? I mean, I know at least one other colleague thinks like this with me. You know, why couldn't we do something like that? Does our charter allow us, not allow us? We should be allowed to do that because Caltrans is an entity.
Is that a Mr. Berger question?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, legally speaking, there's no reason that you cannot sue the Department of Transportation for the standpoint of the general public nuisance requirements under state law. We wouldn't be able to assert our own municipal code against the state agency, but certainly it's subject to state law as much as the city is. That doesn't even have to do with the charter powers. We could do that tomorrow if that's what the city council directed. The managed expectations, though, that I want to put out there is it is likely you will expend a significant amount of money suing Caltrans with regard to that and the outcome is uncertain about. But that's certainly something we can discuss in closed session if that's something that the council would like to explore. There's no prohibition on it.
Right, thank you. And I'd like to explore that. I'd like to, I'd like to have the support to explore litigation with Caltrans, full media-blown press. Whether we lose or not, I mean, it's gonna be bad publicity for them and they're gonna deal with these issues. So it's, we just have to, at one point, at a certain point in time, we have to do something. Four years at least as an elected, I don't want to see another four years go by and nothing be done here. So I think we do a full mo, that's just my opinion.
All right.
I'm one vote.
All right, let's hear what Wendy has to say and then we'll-
I was curious. Oh, go ahead, Sonny.
On Councilmember Santos, I think we're talking about the same thing. I was focusing more on what attracts them. And that's my concern, because until we remove that, then they're gonna keep going there. So whether it's gonna be a park or, as an example, just hypothetically, as an example, just hypothetically, if we remove all trees, I'm not advocating it. If we remove all trees, will that be a solution? Because there's no more place for them to camp. And I know that the trees provide shade, but at the same time, the bad elements use the tree as, you know, as.
I I think it's they're attracted to that area because there's no visibility, there's no um you know.
Oh, they can easily hide. They can easily hide.
They they hide, they hide, exactly, it's unmaintained, it's 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 uh they have their own backyard back there and they're doing whatever they want, you know, they have fires, they got tents, they got
So we need we need to address that, whatever it is.
Right, and and I'm sorry, but my biggest frustration is we're just waiting on Caltrans and we're gonna keep waiting on Caltrans. Can't hold our breath.
Get it.
We don't, we don't have the right to bill Caltrans if we put up a fence. We don't. It's not something we can do.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, there's nothing that prohibits the city from attempting any of these things. The issue comes down to how much in public resources are you willing to expend against a state agency that has way more money than the city of Bellflower? But there is no prohibition on it, that is a complete policy choice on behalf of the city council, and we're certainly happy to discuss it with you and and move forward with it.
Any other questions?
That was my question.
For the record, I support the coldest fence on the other two properties for sure.
So if we, what I'm hearing, and Sonny and Wendy, if we were to approve the areas where we own the property and have some confidence and simultaneously work on a solution for the inhabitants that are in the riverbed. And we will not currently address putting a fence up on Passage Palm until we have a closed session item to figure out our options going forward, but the immediate need would be to work on Beach and Palo Verde. That's if we got the votes for that. On city owned property. So we can give, if we get an approval for that, we're gonna kind of divide the the agreement until we figure out a a better plan than just putting up a fence along Passage.
On on Caltrans property.
Right, because that's kind of up in the air. But I do, only thing I question, and I like the idea of a park. But and it works on the linear park on Palm where we have a park that runs right along, parallel to the freeway. Because the users of that park are those that live in the apartments across the street. It's a wonderful asset for them. We don't have that same environment. It's a commercial environment. And so we don't have, you know, unless you use, you use the trailer park people as an example. So we're basically gonna be building a a a uh park for Vance Trailer Park, because it's not gonna be seen or used by many others.
Well, that and for the uh um whoever, you know, the people that stay at the hotels.
Presumably, yeah.
Right, one hotel now, but ideally, we want another another hotel, it's a beautification of the area.
Exactly.
So it's an investment in that area, and so it wouldn't just be for the Vance Mobile Home, but it's it's again, to create deterrence, it's to create lighting.
No, I get it. But I'm not, I'm looking at it, like you said earlier, I take my kids to the park, would you take your two little boys to that park knowing where it's at?
Well, doing that, I would.
Okay.
I mean, but but you know.
You know, I I gotta get you, I want usage of these things.
Sure, sure, well, then, I mean, in that case, then, I'd say we approved, I would approve the budget for all three until we find a solution for for a a ongoing solution, I'm gonna take what I can get at this point.
No, and I don't disagree with what you're saying, I just want to make sure. And maybe we need, and and we could certainly approve the three thirty seven or what the magic number was less, what we have as a discount. But only put in motion because I think we, I want to hear in closed session the possibilities of and I think our city attorney will be able to instruct us on what what that can be done with.
Right, yeah, and and I think so too, and and that's what I would pursue, I would say let's approve, I would I would move to approve all three. Have it funded while we identify other solutions, and if we don't, we move forward with it. At the end of the day, I have, we have, I have the same problems in that area, and I get calls all the time.
Now, Lynn, when I look at that picture that of the Passage Palm linear fence, there's a sidewalk that runs right along the curb.
Yes.
Is that city property? Does that sidewalk belong to the city?
Uh there's portions of it do, so the the state's property line's a little squiggly through there. There there's portions of the sidewalk that are on the state side, there's portions that are.
My thought was, back to Sonny's idea, let's use our own property. If we own that sidewalk, that's our property.
That that's an option, the 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 issue is currently the sidewalk's not wide enough, so.
Who would use that wide sidewalk anyway?
I would argue why, we don't need that, we don't need that sidewalk there.
Nobody's ever walked on it anyway.
At that point in time.
Make it really easy for me then.
Okay.
But I'm just want to give that as a solution.
Yeah, no, I I think that's, I think that's what we do, I but I.
I don't think it's gonna help that much anyway in that section, if that's the only small section.
Yeah, but I don't think anybody ever used that sidewalk.
Right, it's gonna be, they just go around it anyway. It doesn't matter.
It just went with the curb and gutter, and they put a sidewalk in.
And one more thing, uh correct me if I'm wrong, that area is kind of narrower than the current Palm Street Park, right?
I don't think it's just no Palm Street, and I I look at the slope there.
Right.
And it would have to have some excavation, which I think.
There's a lot of work, yeah, it's a conceptual idea, but I'm saying ideally, the 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 and I would say that the only, the reason why I'm bringing that up is because we're asking to have hotels in that area and we want nice hotels.
It's a deterrent, yes.
So this is a deterrent.
Right.
But but I I mean, when I travel and if I stay at a hotel and there's a many like that, that's perfectly fine. I mean, not like this.
No, but you'd be intimidated by that.
Right, but if we were to invest in that area, that would support the the hotels that we're trying to have from a standpoint of an amenity.
You know, I for me, I I rather work on a solution to make it into a park, if that's the long term solution. Instead of doing a hodgepodge approach at this time.
Is the fencing able to be recycled in a sense, like Victor originally asked? Like if the fence was put up and?
To an extent, yes, like if I had, if eventually we're gonna move the the fencing, we installed fencing on Palm Street, then I want to move it, I could take the panels with me. You know, the the vertical posts that everything's attached to, those get concreted in, they'll they'll have no salvage value, um but I could certainly take the panels themselves and at twelve hundred plus linear feet, there's gonna be a ton of panels and I could certainly have those and recycle them and use them else.
What does a panel cost?
I, it's a a linear foot cost, so I think this was coming in at about a hundred and twenty five dollars a linear foot.
And how wide?
So if the panels.
A ten foot?
Yeah, probably in in eight foot by eight foot section.
About a thousand dollars a panel, would you think?
Probably, in that ballpark, yeah.
And and I I think to Sonny's concerns, I think we move, we budget for everything. We move with the the ones that we own in our property first. And in the meantime, let's see what other solutions we can think of.
But keep in mind, that sidewalk is ours, then we don't have to mess with.
We don't have to mess with Caltrans, yeah. But we do need to mess with Caltrans because they in other ways, but yes, yes.
I would also point out, keep in mind, you have a budget process for your next two year budget coming up in you know, a couple of months now, so something to keep in mind, because you're amending this year's fiscal budget to do this project. You could do it now or do it in a couple of months, either way.
Well, I don't want to leave Victor feeling as though he did not have some promises made to figure, help it out. You know, I don't I don't want to be abandoned on this.
I I think we're coming up with a better solution, I'm gonna push for a park instead of.
No, I think that'll work, any clean area there that we can patrol.
Right.
We can't do anything there.
Because I I hate to see these panels and they're broken into and then, of course, we can use use some, but how what percentages are usable?
Right, no, and and that's why I think we, I guess, I I mean, if you like, I I'm ready to make a motion, I think.
All right, let me hear the public first. Anybody want to give their insights on this? Hey, Mr. Fence, where you been?
So on the um, we're dealing with this at Hollywood Sports, it's been an issue for a long, long time. In front of Hollywood Sports, same issue, we have the flowers there and then the screening so you can't see uh into the soccer fields. Once we took that out and removed all the flowers, they stopped even parking vehicles there, but everybody was camping in front of Hollywood Sports. Now, in the back of the park, we're dealing with a whole bunch of homeless, and Lynn helped me out today a lot. But when I talk to those homeless, like I go, what are you guys doing back there? Well, everybody's leaving me alone. And that seems the the common thread now for the last six months, you're leaving me alone, so. If I was a city, the cheapest thing is clear off everything on the side of that hill. I would even put some solar lights, because the lights, it's would scare them away. But I really think the city should pass some sort of ordinance, no overnight camping, so then we can slowly move these guys out. But I, for you, Sonny, I know you're always looking at the bottom line, but I think the city just starts showing that you're not putting up with it anymore. A little fence here, a little fence there, it's gonna go a long way, because the homeless are all now talking to each other. And near Hollywood Sports, behind us, since they put all the K rails, it's a huge, huge problem. And like yesterday, there had to be like fifty people out there, so they're all telling each other, hey, let's hang out here. The other thing is, on Palm, instead of making that a park, if you made it that a community garden, it'd be cheap, that'll cause people to go there and, you know, take care of their little garden and push people out. That's my my two cents, but I know it's a big problem, and we're dealing with it, but if you don't do nothing, you're gonna get more. But I think if you just clean that top area with the weeds, get it as high as possible, they won't they won't camp out there. That's it, so I'm just throwing that in, I've been here all night.
Well, well, I appreciate that. Now, you've lived at Geo, so I appreciate your insights. If we put a a neighborhood garden in there, we'd probably be feeding the homeless. Which we're already doing. All right, any other public comments before we uh go to a vote? All right, I guess we're ready for a vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to um can't find it. I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four capital project budget, including the funding for the installation of the fencing on vacant lots and right away areas for neighborhood aesthetic beautification, security purposes for the past, oh wait, no, that's not it. Where is it? Oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve um the agenda item with three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars uh with the intent to move forward on the two owned properties, two city owned properties first. And at the same time, approve the the two hundred and five for the Passage Avenue on the cul-de-sac and um um and also work on alternative solutions in the meantime.
All right, so that's the motion, anybody supporting it?
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Victor Sanchez, supported by Councilmember Wendy Morris, please pull the council.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
All right, let's call Mr. Dutton back in.
Where where is this thing at?
We got your point.
Yeah, you got my point.
Yeah. Thanks for coming, Captain. You learned a lot, right? Yeah.
You're gonna need a heavier cutter to cut the fences down.
Yeah. All right, let the record be shown that Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton has rejoined the council. Uh we're on to consent calendar, does anybody have anything they need to recuse themselves or want to pull an item? Hearing nobody, I would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Wendy Morris, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton. Please pull the council on the consent calendar.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Council reports. Let's start with our world traveler, Sonny Sanyones.
I have no comment, Mr. Mayor.
You visited all the crown heads of Europe or something, didn't you? No comment. Mr. Sanchez, anything you'd like to comment on?
Uh yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, um I'd like to just kind of bring some feedback to the to the council and to our staff. I've received a lot of positive comments regarding the traffic signal on Lakewood and Cedar. Definitely makes that area safer. I've also received a couple of comments about it slowing down, and I think that was the intent of the purpose, so.
Oh, they were negative comments.
That's the negative, but it's okay, you you know, he he said he lived in Lakewood and I said, well, that's good for you. Anywho, um the other thing I want to just say is great event on Veterans for Veterans Day. You did a fantastic job, Mr. Mayor, and with that, I'll I'll conclude my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morris, do you have anything you'd like to offer?
Uh no, not tonight.
Mr. Ray.
And I also have nothing to offer.
Okay. Oh, you got some, you remember something?
Yeah, I remember something, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to um ask that we uh adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of Umberto Salazar. Um as you may recall, Umberto Salazar is the father of Alex Salazar, uh a former commissioner, uh former Kiwanian, um you know, very active in the community. And so I'll read this real quick to acknowledge Mr. Umberto Salazar. Umberto Salazar was born on October twenty nineteen forty two in La Pitaia, Zacatecas, and passed away on October fourteen twenty twenty four in Lakewood, California at the age of eighty one. Umberto met his wife Evangelina Vira Montes in nineteen sixty eight, and they soon moved to California where they started a beautiful family. He worked for thirty years at Sierra Restaurant in Bellflower where he learned his restaurant skills. Later, he helped his son Alex Alizar with Salazar Mexican Grill, also located in the city of Bellflower, continuing his legacy in the community. Umberto cherished his loved ones most of all, known for his exceptional sense of humor, known for his exceptional sense of humor and vibrant personality, he was a joy to all who knew him. He will be greatly missed. Umberto is survived by his lovely wife Evangelina, three children Claudia, Ricardo, and Alejandro, nine grandchildren, and four great grandchildren. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the Salazars family.
All right, we'll adjourn in Mr. Salazar's memory. I also have one that I'd like to uh offer. Jenny Vander Marle is a long term resident of Bellflower. Over seventy years, she lived in this city, born in Netherlands, November twenty seventh nineteen twenty eight. She passed away September twenty sixth two thousand twenty four at the age of ninety five. Uh services were held at the Bay Shore Community Congregational Church in Long Beach that she attended. I attended the funeral, of course, myself. She was the lady that lived not far from where I grew up, and she and her family were very close to our family. We went to church together, we did catechism together, our my mother and Jenny carpool together to take us to the different events. We went to the beach together. And there were seven children in the family. And that was, the oldest was Martha, and there was Tom, and there was Dorothy, and there was Gary, and there's Jenny May, and Cindy, and John Allen. The tragic part of this family was that in nineteen sixty five, their father was killed in a truck accident, he was an owner operator of his own truck. And he died, leaving Jenny with seven children. And uh she managed, managed well. And uh made sure that everybody did their best they could and was very proud of their family, and they were very helpful to her over her life. During the funeral, it was announced that Jenny had even traveled to Australia. And I thought that was kind of cute to be able to move or take a vacation to Australia, and I asked one of the children how that occurred. She said, oh, we just all chipped in a little money and mom went to Australia, so they always took care of her. Lived on Main Street all these years and was just an important, vital part of the community. I heard this evening Wendy Morris say that the insurance was written on her property by her father-in-law, Gary Morris, and that uh she knitted booties for the arrival of their new baby back when.
I'm a mittens.
Right, I'm mittens, so uh just a very kind lady, it's when you get to be my age and still have why moms that were mothers of our friends and our friends as well at Ramona's school and Bellflower High, it's like a little part of your childhood has been chipped away again, because you always knew Jenny was there. She was a total class act, I asked her one time, I says, why didn't you ever remarry? And this is how noble she was, she says, you know, I was always afraid I'd end up with somebody that would either beat me up or beat one of the kids up, and it would be out of control. But as long as I was there, I could handle it. And uh Social Security came in to help with the finances, and we got by. And so I want to dedicate this evening's meeting in her honor. She lived to be ninety five years old, and she had no regrets and just a marvelous person that we're all gonna miss. A great example of a citizen of Bellflower who made our town better. So at this time, I am going to adjourn our meeting in honor of Mr. Salazar and of Jenny Vander Marle. And our next regular meeting in Bellfar City Council will be at five thirty PM, Monday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. It's ten, ten in the evening, for adjourn. There you go.
Good night.
Yeah, no.